Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our last board meeting of the school year. It's also our last board meeting for our wonderful student board member and more about that. To get started, I'd like to call up, let's see, for the Pledge of Allegiance, Sophia Lifson. Yes, you can do it. Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Sophia, if you could also lead us with values, mission, and vision.
Absolutely. Okay. The BHUSD mission, statement, vision statement, and values are as follows. Our mission is educational excellence, and our vision is that our students will realize their full potential to thrive with integrity in a complex, changing world. The BHUSD community pledge. The BHUSD community acknowledges that in order to achieve educational excellence, we must act with integrity and respect for each other and our learning environment. Therefore, I pledge to: Model civil behavior and respect in all communications and in public while maintaining a culture of honesty; Listen and acknowledge differences of opinion; Do my part to protect an inclusive culture in which we honor the relationship between all school community members; And honor our learning environment, including how we take care of our schools and our personal property. By holding ourselves and each other accountable to this pledge at all times, we will promote an environment of educational excellence that will allow our entire BHUSD community to thrive.
Thank you very much. Okay, can I get a motion for the approval of the agenda?
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Dr. Breggy, any report of closed session?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Stern. I have two items to report on this evening. The first is the board has approved four to zero case number 52850920242025. And the board has approved four to zero approval of case number 164006520232024. And that is it.
All right, thank you very much. Can I get a motion for item seven?
I'll make a motion for the approval of Resolution 2023-2024-21, student board member.
All right.
Second motion.
Okay, thank you. Okay, very quickly, but not too quickly, I would like to read this resolution dedicated to Sophia Lifson, who this year was our student board member. And it says, whereas Sophia Lifson, a senior at Beverly Hills High School, served as a student member of the Board of Education from June 2023 through June 2024; and whereas Sophia Lifson, elected by her high school peers, was a student representative for all the students in the Beverly Hills Unified School District; and whereas she fulfilled her youth leadership role in a professional manner, diligently keeping informed on all issues; and whereas Sophia was an advocate by involving student leaders from elementary, middle, and high schools by empowering them to share the incredible initiatives happening at their schools; and whereas she was an intelligent, bright spokesperson for all students who provided knowledgeable comments and meaningful contributions to the board meetings; and whereas she demonstrated extraordinary participation in district-wide events and significant commitment to celebrating students through her board reports. Now therefore be it resolved that the Beverly Hills Unified School District, Board of Education, does hereby commend Sophia Lifson for her contributions to the Board of Education as a student representative with this resolution presented this 21st day of May 24th. May 24th, okay. And colleagues, if we could go around and speak about our wonderful board, our student board member.
You are the 12th, I believe, board member that I have worked with, a student board member I've worked with. You are my penultimate student board member that I am working with, so I'm excited about all of us moving on soon. It has been an absolute joy and pleasure to at least share the last few months next to you on the dais and then obviously the first part at the polar opposite end. You have just shown grace, humility, humor with class and really represented the students well. I have to put aside the fact that I've known the family longer than I know most student board member families. And my daughter is friendly with Sophia. I don't know, can we say friends? Is that okay? Friends? I don't know. So it's been, I've known you all quite a long time, and it's great that your journey ended here doing this. It was great to share this with you, so thank you and best of luck, and I will see you on the other side in December.
All right, thank you. Ms. Manishari?
Thank you. Sophia, it has been such a pleasure to have you join us on this board, and I really thank you for your time and your commitment on being an advocate on behalf of the students. I don't think it's easy to be here with us every other week in the middle of finals, schoolwork, everything else that goes along with being a senior, but you did it. And I have to say that when I review the agendas, sometimes I say to myself, I wonder what Sophia would say about that. And it's been amazing to have you be so articulate and honest and sarcastic. I love all those things about you and the time that you put into your student board reports. Only rival Dr. Breggy's, but you have done such an amazing job, so thank you. You really inspired me to be a better board member, and I appreciate that.
Ms. Marcus?
Well, Sophia, from the moment I met you, I knew that we were going to have another great board member during my tenure on the board. And I have to tell you, your joining us on the dais here has been nothing but amazing. I love the way you make the comments. I've loved your questions. I've loved that you put the time in studying the issues, and you are prepared. You are truly a wonderful board member. I think of you as not, but as an equal almost. And I want you to know that wherever you go, whatever you do, I only wish you the very best. And I could only wish for my own kids, I wish for you. So good luck, go forth in spirit, and I'm going to miss you.
And I will say that I don't know what you're going to do with yourself every other Tuesday now. I mean, you know, you just had such fun here. And no, seriously, you were amazing, so poised, very articulate. I loved your reports, the pictures. I loved seeing how connected you were to all your friends, and you had a system whereby people sent you different updates, and it was great how you pulled it together. So we wish you the best, and we really hope that you'll come back and see us, especially if you're bored on a Tuesday night. We expect you to watch every Tuesday.
No, we wouldn't do that to anybody.
And not to one-up Mr. Margot, but if I can get that chance, I will. You're the 14th student board member that I've had, and it's so unique and just so deserving of being and sitting here with all of us and just representing your high school. I remember when we first met, and we spent some time at Starbucks, and I had a whole list of things. And it was just, it was amazing to me to just immediately know how intuitive you are. And we had, there was a lot that was happening on the board at the time, and just not even the issues, but just knowing how to work with people. And you did your homework, so you knew kind of what that seat would be like. It was really impressive. The amount of topics, the amount of hundreds of pages of materials. You were always asking really great questions. And what I really liked, and it was touched upon earlier, is just the fact that you did offer your opinion on some things that were in somewhat controversial when we were talking about cellphone policy. And I really liked that the board turned your way and asked what you had thought about the policy, and I appreciated how candid you were. Going to events, you and I would always run into each other at just about every event, but we both shared that love for doing something after school and seeing these programs in action, seeing our students in action, and that was immediate connection that we had. Thank you for all the work. Please come back. Please visit, like Alex Bowden, who's here. She's come back. So we hope that all of our student board members will do that because you've left quite an impression on us. And it's a lot of work. Thank you for the entire year's work and spending time with you.
Okay, with that, can I get a motion?
We moved in second.
We would love to hear from you, yes. Yes, please.
Well, thank you all so much for the lovely words. So I guess where I want to start with this is, it has obviously been such an amazing experience. Everything I imagined coming into it about really getting to take like a front row seat to learning about governance and leadership and how to stay connected with an entire body of people while also working with others to make really hard decisions about them sometimes, and just having to have that sort of bird's eye perspective on everything has been like no other. And for ASB, I'm technically part of ASB as part of this position. And sometimes people will say, you know, like, what do you do at those meetings? Like, oh my God, you must do your homework. But the work that I get to do for these meetings, I always say is like my favorite class. Like, this is truly my favorite class in school. Yeah, it has been such an amazing honor, being able to get amazing information and work with you all about how our district functions and how hard that can be and how beautiful the nuances of Beverly Hills and our community are that I think are really unlike anywhere else. I may be so lucky to get to work, honestly, going forward in any form of governance or public service. I will never forget a lot of that. Being able to stay so connected to the community, both at school and, like I said, the entire city, through this position, like Dr. Breggy alluded to, through going to events, staying in contact with students and parents and anyone who has questions or I'm able to give insights to from board work has been such an amazing privilege. And yeah, I'm just really, really grateful, oh, to thank all of you, obviously, for your amazing mentorship and help in explaining things to me that I don't understand sometimes or giving me your opinions from your combined insane tenures, both on the board and personally. It has been such a privilege to learn from you all. Dr. Breggy, your cabinet, so amazing. All of my teachers, everyone, Kbev, who works and helps put these meetings on. Just, there's not enough thanks and praise in the world, so yeah, thank you so much.
So all in favor of the resolution?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Before we jump into the public comment, it is wonderful to see that we have such a turnout. Due to time constraints, our bylaws do allow us to keep it to 20 minutes per topic. And we hate to do that because you've all come out here, but in the interest of time and getting through all the, you know, the business of the school, we are going to try to enforce that. And if possible, two minutes per person. If someone ceded their time, then that's four minutes for you. But we really are looking forward to hearing from you. So with that in mind, the first person I have is Ozzy Simon Top. Oh, sorry, seating time to Dr. Jane Taviev.
Hi, okay, I'll introduce myself again for those, nice to see you who don't know me. I'm Dr. Jane Taviev Asher, Director of the Division of Child Neurology and Neurodevelopmental Disabilities at Cedar Sinai. I was asked to reintroduce myself. My comment tonight is really not to the board and to the administration because at your request, I have sent, you know, over 20 articles discussing the role of damage that early screen exposure has for very young children. And I'm sure that you have done your due diligence, read those articles, and probably doubled on your own research. I had asked to show me anything that was in contradiction to what I sent, and I didn't receive anything. So I'm assuming that I know the way that this vote is going to go, that the young children are not going to be exposed to it. And so I really just wanted to speak to the parents watching and kind of review the literature that I have shared with the board, just so that there's unity and no confusion. Many, many parents agree, but I'm sure that there are some that just haven't had a chance to read this. I'm going to skip over the topics in the interest of time that are available to you in all of the newspapers and magazines that you read, like the melatonin disruption of sleep from screen time for children. I mean, melatonin crosses all of your journal media, whether you're liberal or conservative, melatonin crosses party lines, and so you've read about that. That was a little, just trying to throw in a little humor, okay? And social issues, the social deficits that are caused by screen time has been in the popular media as well. You've heard about the ADHD that is caused by early exposure to screen time. I'm not going to get into that. I'm really just going to talk about the TK through second grade population because that's what we're voting on today, and I'm just going to try to go through. I brought a little stack of articles, partial of what I was able to print, of what I have sent out, what they've all read, to just quickly just review, and in the interest of time, I'll just try to consolidate, not what I had planned to do, but I'll try to consolidate it quickly for you. That basically, the literature is showing that reading from paper as compared to reading from the screen activates and develops different parts of the brain. So there is a critical window of brain development. There are actually critical windows for brain development for different functions throughout early childhood. So, but there is a critical window of development for reading and writing in early elementary school and late preschool. And so this window relies on the pathways that are built by writing by hand, by manipulating things in the three-dimensional space, and by reading on paper. It seems like if you read from paper, how is it really different from reading from the screen? I don't know, but it's causing a completely different development of brain pathways. And those brain pathways that are shaped by handwriting as opposed to typing, which seem to us very similar as adults, seems similar to us as adults because our brain has formed. The brain is forming in that window of time. So if you fail to form the handwriting pathways, it actually impacts dyslexia, so inability to read. It will then impact the children's love of reading and their ability to transition into the third grade. From second to third grade, we know that you transition from read to learn, sorry, learn to read into read to learn. So you've stopped learning how to read fluently, and you're now trying to read as much as possible to gain knowledge from that. These studies show that by inhibiting the pathway that is created by handwriting, you are impacting the pathway of reading because they are connected. So this is also the time when the brain is, I think I have one more minute, right? Because you timed me at three, and you're giving me four?
Four, because two minutes was ceded to you and you started with.
Yes, okay. So one other concern that the board has had is, of course, for the standardized tests. And there was a very powerful article that I sent, well, it was supposed to be in a letter. I don't think I sent you this one. I may have, I'll send it to you, this last one. That there was a large study done in 2019 looking at the effects of class time, screen time. So I know a lot of discussions here, well, are the parents giving their kids too much TikTok in kindergarten? And is that what's causing the problem? This controlled for previous screen exposure and controlled for socioeconomic status. So you can't say these children are wealthy and these are disadvantaged. There's nothing like that that you could say from this study. It looked at thousands of students through a nonprofit educational organization and showed that every 30-minute incremental increase in classroom screen time results in a drop in standardized test scores, okay? So that is, that is, I know one thing that the board is concerned about, and this is why I know that there's no way that this is going to pass, and I just want to make sure that the parents all understand. There has been, you know, we talk about the possible benefits of the screen going into the 21st century. I think that this is a very seductive terminology because this is what they used to say about cigarettes also, you know? I mean, they're, when we talk about getting exposure to the 21st century or the baby with, throwing out the baby with the bathwater, I haven't seen that, you know, with the baby being the good thing and the bathwater being the dirty thing you're trying to get rid of, I haven't seen any evidence that specifically and especially in this young age group, that there is a baby, a good element in the screen exposure in TK through second grade. So thank you, and I hope the parents have all understood, and I'm certain that the board agrees. Thank you.
Okay, so Dr. Reitman? Erin Reitman. And so you have four minutes.
I'm going to try to do this under two minutes, just to be respectful to everybody. Anyways, good evening, Board of Education, Dr. Breggy and his cabinet, and the viewers watching from Kbev. I'm going to do that every time I speak. Two weeks ago, I spoke, last time I gave some evidence-based medicine research on what happens with screen time. I'm going to knock over through that, but long story short, tonight, the board is going to be asked to approve a $60,000 purchase for a total of 100 new iPads. I just want to let you know, with great technology comes with greater responsibility. Tonight, I'm asking the board to provide guidance on whether current and future iPads are used in the school district. Please ask for which grades these iPads will be used for. Is it just for K through second? Or are they going to be used for other ones? Will these iPads be used for if there's another emergency closure of the school district? And this is why we need them.
Yes.
And that's important to note, to let the community know. Currently, the BHUSD elementary schools adhere to the latest evidence-based scholarly approaches. For example, achievement is not necessarily linked to the time spent with homework. However, that quiet time of kids doing homework is so nice for parents. Or on the other side, it could be where the parents are crying because they don't even know how to do the homework. That's my joke for tonight.
That's good.
The well-known Australian author of Visible Learning by Professor John Hattie stated, "Every child is a learner, is teachable, can grow, and can be taught to love learning." Students have expectations, and the educator's role is to help students exceed what they think is their potential. Students need to be taught to take on challenges with safety nets when they fail. With the potential negative impacts of early and excess screen time, there is no safety net. During the pandemic, the students within BHUSD had no other choice but to be exposed to excess screen time. The research is emerging. My recommendation is for the board to schedule a future study session, invite prominent scholars who have published the effects of media and screen time. This way, there can be a two-way conversation rather than just listen to me for two minutes. Have a wonderful evening. I have to get to my kid's baseball game, playoffs. Thank you. Hopefully it was less than two minutes.
Okay, Heather Copeland, Selma St. Tower. Okay, is she here? Is Heather Copeland here? No? Heather Copeland? Okay. Moving on, I want to keep it to the same topic. Let's see, Michael Baston? Oh, yes, I would like to, if we could, keep it to the Okay. Is there a protocol they have to fill out prior?
So, so both of you are speaking?
No, just her.
Oh, okay.
She's taking your phone?
Yes, that's fine.
We're going to adjust the microphone, one second. Tell us your name again, please.
Hi, my name is Jordan, and I am a third grader at Hawthorne Elementary School. Since the start of the year, my whole class has been complaining about iReady, and none of us like it. My teacher told the whole, the whole entire class that if it wasn't her choice, she doesn't want us to do iReady. There is many reasons why my whole class doesn't like iReady. One of the reasons is that they try to make iReady fun, but it is not fun for my class. Another reason is that we are not learning anything new. Please consider removing iReady.
Okay, so thank you. It's nice to hear from our kids. Let's see. Can we go then to Zoom to stay sort of on the technology?
Oh, I see.
Yeah. Well, no, I mean. Sorry, yeah.
We have somebody on Zoom.
Yeah, so Michael should be on Zoom.
Okay.
So he gets four minutes.
Okay, Michael, excuse me if I mispronounce your name, Michael Baston, and you get four minutes. Okay. Hello, let's see if we can hear you. Good evening. Can you hear us?
Nothing from my computer.
We're having trouble hearing you.
I wonder if it, sometimes we've hit that TV before.
Sophia? Would you mind, you're a young person, can you?
It's been a long time since we've done this, so I do remember that sometimes
This will be your last.
I know.
Okay, I'm going to dial into the Zoom, tell COM I'm dialing in.
Okay, that's better. That's it, thank you. Yes, sir, can you speak a little so we can make sure we can hear you?
Great, okay. Finally. Dear board members and Dr. Breggy, I appreciate the time constraints here, so.
It's fine on my side.
If you're talking and then it throws.
Is there anybody from KBEV that can come help us?
Azim, can you hear me?
All right, that's all, that's good, sir. We're good.
You're good.
Okay. All right, let's try this. Let's try this one more time. Dear Board members and Dr. Braggie, I'll try and keep. Okay. I'll try and keep this as brief as possible because, hey man, okay. I'll try and keep this as brief as possible because I'm cognizant of time constraints. We as parents choose to buy. Azim, Azim, come take them, come take them. As you can see, we have young kids in this house. So we as parents choose to buy and rent in the Beverly Hills School District because we want better than average or okay. We're here because we want the best for our kids and strive to provide them with the best education. We want the best teachers, the best administration, and a school board, the best school board supporting our teachers and children. This really is a great community to be a part of. And we'll talk briefly about two things, class sizes and technology. On the issue of class sizes, it appears that we're settling for just okay with class sizes up to 29 teachers per child allowed for fourth and fifth grade. And at Elrodeo next year, there will be just three teachers, meaning all classes are projected to hit that maximum class size of 29. The California Education Code, which has not been updated since 1964, allows class sizes up to 29.9, uh, children in per classroom. So we are less than one student below the legal maximum. Is this what the best for our kids looks like? All that's needed to lower the class size to a much more manageable 22 children per class is to hire one more teacher. Countless research shows that academic outcomes are correlated inversely to class size. I understand that there are fiscal concerns here, but I would request that you look at where other budgets can be trimmed to hire just one more teacher. And if that can't be done, the community is here for you. I promise, whether it's through the PTA, BHF, or even a community campaign, we parents will raise the monies needed. My wife, who is going to speak, is a substitute teacher in Beverly Hills, and I pledge to donate more than what our portion would be for the cost of that one additional teacher. Remember, we are not here to settle for okay. We're in this incredible school district because we want the best for our children. Now, very briefly onto technology. I'm certainly no expert here like the extremely knowledgeable doctors who spoke earlier, but I want to highlight this from a different set of experts, those in the technology industry such as Bill Gates, Sundar Pichai, Mark Cuban, and Evan Spiegel, who are all on the record for limiting their children's screen time. Steve Jobs in 2010 says, "We don't allow the iPad in the home. We think it's too dangerous for them." The Times of London had a 2018 article headlined, "Why the Silicon Valley Titans Who Got Our Kids Addicted to Screens Are Sending Their Own Children to Tech-Free Waldorf Schools." Let's allow our younger children to explore, play, and learn the way we did, not sat staring at screens, especially at this crucial stage of their development. Please take leadership here on these two issues and reconsider purchasing iPads for TK to second grade and mandating their usage to only when absolutely necessary, if at all. And please hire an additional fourth grade teacher at Elrodeo next year. Let's not settle for okay here, and let's strive for educational excellence in BHUSD. Thank you.
Thank you. Also from Zoom, Sophia Rabadi? No? Okay. Let's see. All right, continuing with, I guess we'll go, we'll continue with speaking about class size in fourth grade. Rochelle Hakoc. And you have four minutes as time was ceded to you.
I made a five-minute and a half speech, so I'm going to try. Okay. My name is Rochelle Hakoc-Lavey. I'm an alum, a mom, a resident, and I'm also a psychologist.
Can you speak into the mic, please? Thank you.
Okay. I currently have twins in fourth grade and another in third grade. My third grader started this year. His, in his first three weeks of school, my eighth grade, my eight-year-old learned many vulgar terms for genitalia. His anxiety over how much physicality with hitting, smacking, and punching happening in his class and playground was really upsetting to him. These are all things he didn't experience, I can go on about that, but on time. These are all things he did not experience in school in LEUSD. This cohort is known by parents in a partic, as a particularly difficult one. The teachers have been struggling to teach versus discipline. We all feel it. Why would anyone take this group of children who are already struggling and needing extra support and make the classes bigger? Beverly Hills prides itself on being mindful and thoughtful and having great education. I'm confused about decisions that go against best practice in education based on empirically validated research. BHUSD purchased the iReady program. The district has created a system where the children are forced to use iReady 90 minutes per week, which comes out to be one class day a month. Wow, what we could do with that precious time? The district put so much money into this computer program, but decided to take an actual human being out of the classroom. They're making three classes of 29 at Hawthorne. The differentiation becomes blurred between LEUSD, the second-largest school district in the country, and Hawthorne. I love research. In my line of work, we don't make decisions or practice anything outside the scope of what has been proven effective. The Institute of Education Sciences, the research arm of the U.S. Department of Education, concludes that class size reduction increases student's achievement. Every controlled study of the California Class Reduction Program has shown significant gains resulting in smaller classes. Additionally, parents were more involved. When there were smaller classes, students were less disruptive and stayed on task. Evidence-based research throughout the country has demonstrated that students are assigned to smaller classes do better in every way that can be measurable by scores on higher tests, better grades, improved attendance, and behavior. Research shows that students who attend smaller classes in elementary were significantly ahead of their regular class peers in subjects at later grades. These students scored higher on college entrance exams and did better overall. In addition, smaller classes enhance the development of noncognitive skills that are not captured in tests like persistence, motivation, self-esteem. These are all linked to success in school and in life. The National Service, the National Surveys of Educators believe that class size reduction is the most effective method to improve quality of teaching. A study commissioned by the U.S. State Department of Education analyzed achievement levels, sorry, achievement levels of students in 256 schools across the nation as measured by their performance on the national assessments of educational program exams. The sample included at least 50 schools in each state, including, all, including small and large schools, urban and rural, affluent and poor areas. Guess what happens? What did they find after controlling for all those things? The only objective factor that correlated with higher test scores was class size. In addition, one more, in addition, one to more attention is given to each student as teachers create better connections to student. As we all know, from being human beings, connection is everything for learning, growing, and thriving. Smaller classes help teachers provide special education to each student, lower teacher burnout and, lower teacher and student burnout. As a psychologist, I see burnout of these children and the mental life that is placed on them every day. How can you turn a class of 20 to 24 into a class of 29? That is a 25% increase and expect better outcomes? Putting money into iReady and demanding an increase in classroom screen time with iReady will not help you with better outcomes. Research shows that increased screen time has negative impacts, as we just talked about, the social, emotional, psychological, and neurological beings of children. Okay. But, okay, sorry, one more second. But what we do find is that class size, reducing class size shows significant correlations to higher performance in standardized testing. So where are we going to put our money, into technology or human beings? Thank you.
Thank you. Molly Rabanian? Molly? I think you have two minutes.
Sorry to have this on my phone, but that's just the way the day went. Hello to everyone on the board. I'm Molly Rabanian. I am the mother of two incredible girls, one entering Elrodeo as a first-time student in kindergarten and one entering Elrodeo as a fourth-grade student. Our story to be here is unique, but also not that different than many families here. Personally, I took my daughter out of a small private school in second grade after hearing so many wonderful things about the school just down the road from our house, which is Hawthorne. After hearing about many fantastic things the BHUSD has to offer, something that stood out the most to us was smaller class sizes, the special education programs, and mainstream academic programs were ultimately what drew my family in. We have such a beautiful resource, an IEP program, which my daughter has been a part of since day one of entering second grade. I'm now afraid that increasing the fourth-grade class sizes by 25%, my daughter will go from truly thriving to barely surviving. BHUSD has always taken pride in having smaller class sizes. A friend and a fellow parent with a child expected to enter Elrodeo fourth-grade class has said this to me. "As a teacher, I can tell you from experience and countless studies that student-teachers' ratio is a huge factor of student success, if not the most important indicator of student success. And it's truly a shame that there is expected to be such a drastic change in consistency from the BHUSD district." BHUSD. This change to our students is not only a disservice, oh, this change for our students is not only a disservice to children, it's a disservice to our teachers. And it's disrespectful to expect one teacher to actually teach, guide, educate, and properly discipline 29 students that are known to already have behavioral difficulties. I'll just end with this. There isn't one family who attends BHUSD that is forced to be in this district. We have chosen to be here versus a private school. We want smaller class sizes. We've been promised and deserve. We could all walk away easily from a district that is chosen to compromise our children's education by increasing the class sizes by 25%. Thank you.
Thank you. We welcome Melissa Ironi. Okay, not here? Okay. Lucy Davenport Broder. Okay. Okay, and Lucy, you have two minutes.
I have two minutes. Great. Good evening, board. Good evening, everybody. I'll try not to duplicate any material that's already been said. I'm a longtime Beverly Hills resident, despite the accent, and a longtime supporter of Beverly Hills USD. I have a daughter who went all the way through my elementary school. I have a son in third grade who's here. And we are huge supporters of the school district and always have been. We are here to say that we are also shocked about the idea that our children are going to go from a average class size of 19 to 21 to a class size of 29 at Elrodeo next year. The excellence of Beverly Hills elementary education has always been based around the class size. And we have heard from everybody this evening about how there are studies, educational, scientific, about how class size has a direct impact on education. Again, also, it's no secret that the current third grade at Hawthorne is already a grade that has a lot of challenges, and so collapsing those four classes into three classes would mean that the teachers who are already overstretched would be even more overstretched in a new environment where we are already doing a massive school move, and there are going to be necessarily teething problems about that school move. And to heap another huge increase of class size on top of teachers who are already adapting to a new campus would also be an issue. There's also inequity here. There is going to be a delta between the class size at Horace Mann, which will remain at 21, between 19 and 21, and the class size at Elrodeo, which will jump that 25% to 29 kids. And I think that there is nobody, nobody in this entire room or watching or on this board who's had children who would be, who would settle for the kids in one section of that. Is that my two minutes? Goodness me. There would, nobody, nobody who would settle for one elementary school with 29 kids and one with 21. Elrodeo promises to be beautiful, an amazing new campus. I want to make sure, and the parents here want to make sure, that what goes on inside that beautiful campus is as beautiful and lets our students thrive in the best way possible. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Sam Saleh, fourth grade? About, sorry, about fourth grade? No, not here, Sam Saleh? Okay. Sharon Hakimfar DeBibian? Oh, yes.
I could just add one thing, just a reminder that these kids entering fourth grade in kindergarten, it was COVID. And their whole school year was on Zoom, which was a complete disaster in and of itself. So they've had a horrible start to begin with an elementary school.
Thank you. We can go back to Zoom? Azim Bastan? No, Zoom?
But Zin is on Zoom.
I think Stella is on Zoom.
Oh. All right, I don't see Zoom coming up. Oh, hello.
I'm here.
Hello.
All right, I don't see Zoom coming up. Oh, hello.
I'm here.
Hello.
Hi.
Hello, you have two minutes.
Good evening, members of the board and Dr. Braggie. I speak to you tonight as not only a mother to three children who attend Hawthorne School, but also as an educator, who holds a credential in elementary education, a master's degree in education, and a proud substitute teacher for the Beverly Hills Unified School District. As many of you have heard, next year, the fourth-grade classes will be increased to a larger size since there will only be three teachers instead of four. As an educator myself, I have studied and experienced firsthand effects of student-teacher ratio and its direct effect on student achievement and success. It will be a big error to increase class size like this. I love BHUSD, and I bought a house in this school district just so my children could go to the schools. We are a very special district with a beautiful, caring community, small class sizes, and wonderful teachers. When I previously emailed the board and Dr. Braggie on this topic, Dr. Braggie's response was that 29 students per class is still below the California Education Code, Sections 41376 and 41378, stating that the average number of students per teacher not to exceed greater than 29.9. Honorable board members, Dr. Braggie, if we are to be at 29 students per class, we can do better. We need to be better than the California average and not by .9. It is not enough to be average or slightly above average, but follow our district mission, which is educational excellence. It's important that we really take into consideration that increasing class size would be detrimental to these children. We need to make sure a fourth-grade classroom teacher is added to prevent this from occurring. I appreciate your time and your consideration. Thank you, board.
Thank you. Ben Haguli? Ben? No? Oh, he's on, okay. Zoom coming up? Is there any?
Did we hit the 20-minute lock, or did we? Could we have found one too?
Is there anyone on Zoom? Right. Okay, why don't we start with Carol then, while we're figuring out where our Zoom speakers might have gone? Okay, thank you, Carol. Two minutes? Okay. Carol, you have two minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello. I have to find myself here. Hi. Hello, my name is Carol Hakoc. I'm a longtime resident. I'm a longtime resident of Beverly Hills. My children attended Beverly Hills Unified, and my grandchildren are attending now in third and fourth grades at Hawthorne. I'm a retired National Board Certified Teacher, having taught for 22 years at Brentwood Science Magnet School. I am greatly concerned about a decision that was recently made by the district to deplete the upcoming fourth grade of one teacher and fill those fourth-grade classes with a maximum 29 students each. This will increase the class sizes by 25% from what the children have in third grade, being that this specific cohort of students have particular behavior issues that warrant the need for smaller class sizes. I see that the education of all the children at this grade level will be greatly impacted negatively. May I remind you, and somebody mentioned this before, that these children were in kindergarten during the pandemic. Their socialization skills were greatly held back, as were their ability to meet classroom behavior expectations once they returned to school. They are still in need of greater support by being in a classroom with a smaller ratio of teacher to students than what might have been expected before the pandemic. I am disappointed that my own grandchildren staying in Beverly Hills for their education will not put... That the education in Beverly Hills will not put them on a more solid footing scholastically because the grade levels history, that particular grade level's history and present maturity in real time have not been taken into consideration. Please keep the four teachers for fourth grade in what will be El Rodeo Elementary School come fall 2024. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
He says that he's on Zoom waiting. Yeah, and I see his name.
Okay, is this a K, Ben? Oh, hello, Ben. Good evening, Ben, you have two minutes.
I can't hear anything, so I'm not positive if you hear me, but hopefully you do. Sounds like you might.
We do hear you.
Good evening. Thank you for your time today. My name is Ben Haguli, and my son Simon attends the third grade at Hawthorne Elementary. As many other folks have mentioned, it's a well-established and scientifically researched fact that class size and academic performance and growth are negatively correlated. We are very concerned about the decision to remove a fourth-grade class and therefore dramatically increase the size of the remaining classes. Both learning and test scores will be negatively impacted, ultimately affecting the reputation of the school. Simply put, these fourth graders will be less prepared and behind every class that came before them with a more manageable class size. After COVID, we know our kids are collectively a little behind. This is not the time to put them further behind. If there is budget and energy for a brand-new campus, there must be budget and energy to keep our fourth-grade classes. We should be exhausting all our alternatives to retain current class size and give these kids the same opportunity and attention that every other fourth-grade class at Hawthorne and El Rodeo has had. I look forward to your thoughts and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Stern, I have another gentleman. I just have his name wrong. It's Sam Emery.
Okay, Sam Emery. Hello. Sir, you have two minutes.
Thank you. I'm currently a parent of a third grader entering fourth grade at El Rodeo. Her class is currently 21 students, so I hear this 25% increase. But at 21 to 29, my math is 38% increase. Imagine if a school had 500 students and it increased by 38%. That would be 690 students, just to give some context. Another way to look at it is if you're a student with 100% test score, and now you scored 38% lower, you drop 62%. When I went to school, that's a D minus. You're turning our A students into D minus students at best. This change is not just unfair for the students, but also the teachers in fourth grade. It's not an easy grade to teach. There are a lot of concepts that are more difficult to comprehend, and also larger products that need to be monitored and graded. Having 38% more to do is not fair to anyone. Will teachers get paid 38% more for the extra work? Are other classes being added, such as kindergarten or TK? Average student-to-teacher ratio in California, when I looked it up, is 23 to 1. Most other states are in the teens, 15 or 16 to 1. My research online suggests Warner is 13 to 1, while Hawthorne is shown at 21 to 1 on average. Magnet schools in LA are capped at 25 to 1 for fourth grade, while the actual is likely much lower. Time is of the essence. Classes are likely being formed next year, now or soon. It's unfair to push this onto our incoming fourth-grade students so late in the year. Why was this grade picked? I'm not quite clear. I'm sure there's other adjustments that can be made. I assume none of you have any incoming fourth graders at El Rodeo? You know, if, if, I thought, I would think if you had a kid coming into fourth grade, you may think about this differently. And yeah, please keep the four teachers in our grade. We'd really, 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 really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see. Grace Tassa? Grace? Okay, let's see. That might... Okay. Grace Tassa, online.
I'm texting here.
Okay.
Just for math clarification, if it goes from 19 to 29, it's a 52% increase. So it's anywhere from a 38 to 52% increase.
Okay, thank you.
It'd be great if the salary increased.
I see Grace on the side there.
Hi.
Hi, Grace. We don't see, but we do hear you.
I hope someone can hear me.
We can hear you. Can you hear us?
Hi. Oh, okay. Sorry. Okay, there we are. Hi. I think I did this right.
We can see you and hear you.
Hi, I'm hoping you can hear me. Hi, I'm Grace Tassa. I'm a mom in Beverly Hills and a physician. And I just wanted to speak... I'm, I'm, my kid's in the car, so. I wanted to speak on behalf of my son Ezra. He's turning four, and he's going to start TK this August. We live walking distance from Horace Mann. Oh, my audio shit. I hope you can still hear me. So we live walking distance from Horace Mann, and Ezra's older brother is a student on Horace Mann. I was surprised to learn that Ezra's placed at El Rodeo for TK. So I thought this must be an error, but when I contacted BHUSD, I was told there's inadequate space at Horace Mann for local TK students and that all those affected have to go to El Rodeo. On looking into this further, I learned that instead of three TK classes at Horace Mann this year, they're going to be decreased to two TK classes. So I'm speaking today to request the Board add a third TK class for the coming academic year to accommodate all the TK students that should be assigned to Horace Mann. In my son's preschool class alone, which has about 10 students, I know of two other families that are affected, including one family with a student also already enrolled at Horace Mann. In addition, those families, just like my own, are walking distance from Horace Mann. And I'm certain there's many other families in this scenario. I understand that last summer, a third TK class was added midsummer, right before school was starting. Adding a third class now versus waiting until later in the summer is really important because parents need to be able to make dependent childcare arrangements in advance, transportation, alternate childcare, after-school plans for other children, et cetera. For example, I know in one case, the family's longtime nanny doesn't drive, so they would have to make significant changes in their family well ahead of time if their student is indeed going to go to El Rodeo for TK. Horace Mann is part of our community. We're part of the Horace Mann community. Local students should be able to start their academic career at their home school, where they will be continuing their education for years. As mentioned, some have siblings at Horace Mann and/or other local ties that likewise make it practically challenging to have Horace Mann-based TK students instead send to El Rodeo. Lastly, being geographically close to your home school equates to more involvement in school activities, fundraisers, and the community at large. These are all important to our children's education. Please consider adding a third TK class to Horace Mann as soon as possible. Thank you.
I don't know if you can hear me, but thank you. I think that concludes our public comment. Okay, thank you, everyone.
Dr. Stern, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar minus items 9E and 9F.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, I'll make a motion for 9E, the elementary iPads for Horace Mann and El Rodeo, 24, 25 school year.
I'll second. Oh, so...
Discussion.
Yeah, discussion. Okay.
Not yet.
All right. Judy, would you like to start?
Sure.
Okay, and then we will go around to, you know, so everyone can...
Great, thank you so much. I pulled this item because I am concerned, for a variety of reasons, about the iPad purchase order of $60,000. First, I'll talk about the funding source, which is that it's coming from the bond dollars. You know, every dollar that we spend on something that is not related to the construction means that we are that much tighter on what we can do to finish up the high school. And it's not that the bond does not allow for funds to be spent on tech. So I'm not saying that they're doing the wrong thing, but I am posing the question of, are we doing the right thing? I also thought that we, as a Board, had discussed and given instruction that no more bond dollars were to be utilized toward tech. I feel that we had that type of a conversation. And I also was under the impression that there was a portion of the bond dollars that, that was in the past, set aside to be spent on tech. And I would like to know if this proposal is meant to pull from that limited source stemming from the bond dollars.
Raphael. Yes, hi.
Thank you for joining us.
Thank you, Ms. Natchery, and good evening, Dr. Stern, Board members, community. Yes, so these funds are actually already tailored out. It's already budgeted as part of bond funds. And so just so everyone could understand, you know, the bond funds are separate funds. Bond funds cannot be used for staff. It can't be used for those types of expenses. It can only be used for expenses approved by the voters. In this case, the voters approve construction. The voters approve technology, such as iPads and these types of purchases. So there was a pot set aside for this from those Measure BH funds, so this does not impact the other funds that are outlined for construction. So these are already budgeted funds. I think we have two more years. These are part of refresh funds, meaning they're not specifically targeted to a specific person. It's part of our refresh that we're doing. So this is why it's something that we bring forward. It's, as you know, when you purchase a device, it's not going to be a forever device. You have to replace it at some point. To your earlier point, yes, so besides those funds, the district did start the technology refresh program. We are setting aside funds so that when we do run out of money from the bond funds, we're able to still purchase technology for all of our students. And that's not just, you know, it's for all grade levels, the grade levels that are impacted in technology that the Board decides. So essentially, that is where we're at. But we are setting aside funds for that because in the future, we will need funds, and we will not have any more bond funds to do that.
Got it, thank you. And then we, we, already, all of our TK through second students have one-to-one devices, right?
Yes.
So then what are these, these devices going to be used for?
So again, it's part of our refresh. So some of these devices have kind of aged out. So we have to purchase new devices so that we're able to load the appropriate programs. And some of them are just at the end of useful life. We keep a really detailed track of all of our devices, how much we use them, and when it cycles out. So this is part of that cycle that we have to replace from time to time.
So this doesn't represent a new allotment of them? This is a refresh?
Yes.
Like, it's not like a whole, it's not an onslaught of a bunch of new ones? It's a replacement?
It's a refresh of what we have now.
Sorry.
But then, for example, my understanding is that all of the TK students have one-to-one devices, but they're not being used in the TK classes. So for example, we could reallocate those, that set of iPads for second grade?
I would have to look at that specifically, but either way, you would still have to do some sort of refresh. So every, you know, it's usually every five years, three to five years that we have to replace. And this is one of those kind of replacements that we're doing. And so that's just part of that cycle. Now, as far as how these devices are used, that's another conversation. But this is just in regards to us having the, the materials that we need in our classroom per the direction of the Board of, of where we're at. We have to just be able to replace and refresh. It's not like a, we're going to add a whole new section of iPads, a whole new section, no, it's a refresh of our existing.
And there are other classrooms as well, other elective areas that it's, it will replace.
So, so then if I'm understanding you, that means that not only are the TK through two students given one-to-one devices, but then, in addition, when they go to Makerspace or when they go to other programs, there is more technology available to them?
That is correct, yes.
So it follows them around all day long?
Well, in the sense of, I'm talking about the devices itself.
No?
No, no. So the, the issue is, is really with the amount of use. So it's, it's something that we've talked about before as far as the, they're not walking around with an iPad from elective to elective.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying the iPad is in their hand. I'm saying wherever they go, there's an iPad that's available.
We do not use technology in grades TK through probably second, if not even third, fourth, and fifth, in things like Makerspace, Science Lab, they use a little bit with the Mystery Science, but technically, third through up. So they're not following the students around. We do use them almost minimally in TK. Just two Board member meetings ago, we even addressed, you have a TK student, and you weren't even aware at that time that they actually had them in the classroom. Because we, we spent the whole last two years with bringing on our transitional kindergarten class and getting them all trained in ECE, Early Childhood Education, at play-based learning. So we still handwrite. We still focus on play-based learning, building relationships. When we utilize the technology, we are doing it either for differentiation for students that need it, our EL population, our special education population, and/or we're utilizing it to monitor growth. We're not utilizing it to teach our students, and that's incorrect. So if you'd like to set up, we could always do a tour of a classroom. We can go in and see different utilizations of technology and how we leverage it. But we are still teaching handwriting. We are one of the few districts that didn't stop teaching handwriting.
Thank you.
That's the truth. They're pressing a law now to reinstate it. But we never stopped teaching.
They're pressing a law now to reinstate it, but we never stopped teaching it.
That's correct. You and I have talked about this before. You and I, we don't have a trust issue. I trust everything that you say, and I take you for face value, and I appreciate your time and your care. I have a concern because, from what I can understand, we're not exactly clear on who's using it, who's not using it, what is it being used for, what is it not being used for? And so I am not accusing you or anybody else here. What I am saying is, I would like to have a better understanding, and I think that having a better understanding is a really good thing. And it is hard for me to approve of this when I don't have a full grasp of what is the purpose. And so that's all I'm saying here. I really would like to learn more about the subject, and I, I don't have a problem putting my stake in the ground and saying clearly and unequivocally that I believe that there should be no iPads in the TK room whatsoever for anybody to determine in the future that they do want to use them. And then I really think that they probably shouldn't be there in kindergarten or first, and in second grade, maybe we could start to talk about it. That is my gut feeling, and I say that with all due respect to you and all of the amazing work that you did and do. We've had many conversations, and I know that the state of California is coming back to handwriting, and we always had handwriting. And so I know that you are not a pendulum swinger, and you do what you believe is right for us in the long haul, but I'm letting you know that as a board member, and as a parent, and as an aunt, and as a neighbor, and somebody who takes devices away from kids and who sees when devices are taken away from kids, how they behave, what happens, I have a lot of concerns. And so for that reason, since I don't have enough information, I'm going to vote no, and I am open to hearing what my colleagues have to say on the subject.
Can I add one?
Yes.
One thing.
Please.
We are all on the same team.
Yes.
None of us are here to create any sort of detrimental situation for any student.
Agreed.
Everything that we do, from professional development to training our teachers, from site-based administration to cabinet to Board of Education and even our parents, we are all, all on the same page, and we do all want the same thing. As administration, and I stated this just two weeks ago, we've worked even pre-COVID, there were more applications and more technology actually in the classrooms. We didn't have a heavy lift moving into home learning. We were actually only really buying cameras for the teachers because we were already one-to-one. I came in in 2017. We were already one-to-one then. So that's not new to the district. We've been one-to-one since 2017. But we all agree that there was the Wild West. People were jumping into it, and we have worked as administration, the list that was even just brought two weeks ago is half the list.
Yes.
That was brought in 2018 or 2019. And each year, working with our executive director or director of technology, with our site-based administration, our teachers, surveying our teachers, surveying screen time, feedback from the community for sure, and then our own executive board, we keep paring that back to ensure that we aren't a plug-and-play district.
Thank you.
That is not our goal, and I...
Thank you.
Yeah.
And I agree wholeheartedly. I know I'm on your team, and I know you're on my team.
I would just like to add, though, like, because I think that, you know, there's been this renewed focus that we're listening, and I think it's really important conversation here. I think without taking tools away, that we'd love to spend the time, the in-depth time that it's going to take to look to see how the, how the instruments are being used, when they're being used, how often they're being used.
What age?
You know, without taking them away right now, let's get an authentic view on what's happening and how they're being used, because there, if it's a student that's working on it for free time, or that somebody's on YouTube, or somebody like, and not as an, like, we can find that out, like...
And, and thank you for that. And I think what I was alluding to last time is that I want us to be in control of whatever it is, and we will not be able to be in control if we're not asking the questions and we're not talking about it. So for me, it's, I'm not trying to attack anyone. I'm trying to let you know, I need to know more. I'd like for you to know more. So, you know, thank you. I appreciate that. We have strategic plan coming up. We have a lot coming up for next year, so it would be
We do.
great to, you know, maybe add this to one of the items that we're really investigating. But I do ask you, I understand that you're trying to deliver the education, but I also ask you, because you know that we're dealing with the whole child here, to really please acknowledge and incorporate the studies on the other side. From what I can tell, we have been presented with studies that are clear about the detriments. I understand that it is helpful to use these tools, but until now, nobody has provided me with studies about the long-term benefits. And to me, that is, that's what I'm looking for, and I'm, and you've been working with me for one and a half years. I have an open mind, and I have an open heart, but I'm a critical thinker, and I need to see a little bit more on the other side, other than, hey, it gives them more opportunities. That's not enough for me. Thank you.
If I may just add...
Then I do want to go around and...
Just, just one quick thing, just, and this is a good conversation, of course, as Dr. Bregu mentioned, but the issue with these orders, just, and I don't mean to push, but the issue with these orders are the lead times and us receiving these doc, these types of things. We put in these orders now so that we could get them sometime in, hopefully, August or September. So delaying this kind of pushes that. The way that the items are used, that's definitely can be modified, however, the board seems, deems best fit. We do have other renewal cycles that if, for whatever reason, we don't implement, or we use, like you said, we could use iPads from one grade level for another, and we could do all of that, but then that would cancel one of our future refreshes, but I think to not approve it now kind of hinders all the other grade levels that do use it. So one thing is an ordering of an item, and the other thing is how it's, how it's utilized. Again, this is part of our refresh. Not doing it now can delay our process to be able to get the iPads and the items that we need for, for all of our students. So I think those are, they're, they're not necessarily two completely separate conversations, but they sort of are in the sense of the, you can limit the use to however you deem fit later.
Can I ask, Sophia, do you want to weigh in on this as a person who is in our district, a student?
So just to clarify, if we didn't renew this order, we, what would happen then? Would we just be behind then on?
We would, we would be behind in the, the different grade levels that, that the board decides that are going to be using these types of technologies. We'll be behind there because, again, we're not able to do our refresh. What the benefit is of this is if there is a change in regards to what we are using in the classroom, then that's fine. We can then utilize whatever we have in this classroom for another one if it's new enough for us to do it, but it shouldn't really impact the refresh cycle as much, because at the other grade levels, you'll use them. But again, the refresh is something that we need to do now to that we get the items on time, especially at the, like, we have, that's why we separated it into two different items. And so these are, again, for, this one is for Horace Mann and El Rodeo, and it's, again, for, across the refresh for all levels.
So I want to answer that question too, because I think that's a good question, because I think the unknown here is, you know, what, what's going to happen? What are we going to lose? And I, I think that we haven't defined what the problem is yet. And so, like, what is, how much is too much? How much is, you know, how often is this being used in our TK through first-grade classrooms? And I think that's what we need to find out first. So that my recommendation and suggestion, before we take away a tool, let's find out, let's define whether this is an issue or not.
Completely. And additionally, will, at the very least, just delaying this refresh affect the way that the iPads are currently being used in TK through third?
It could.
It potentially could, but again, I think it's not just for, to be clear, it's not only TK three, it's across also fourth and fifth. So again, this is a refresh to replace the ones that exist, and we want to make sure that everyone has access to it. Again, the conversation of what you do with these could be had
It's another matter.
I just don't want us to be in a scenario where we, all of a sudden, don't have functioning iPads that we need for, maybe it's only four or five? I, I don't know. I mean, that's another question, right? That's another conversation. But as far as us ordering this, I think it, it'll be beneficial to us to order it now. And if you think, well, what about if I just use the TK first and second ones to, for the other grade levels? Well, those might not be good enough to use anymore, again, because we, technology needs to be refreshed, so.
Unfortunately, and it moves very quickly. You know, the evolution of these tools moves very quickly, and it's very hard for us to keep up.
And it's hard to get them. I mean, you have a lot, the other thing that's happening right now, schools are rushing to purchase technology all over because federal funds are running out, specifically ESSER dollars, and people are doing a lot of their refreshes right now. So it's hard to get these devices and, you know, to order them. And that's the other thing. The ESSER funds are expiring September 30th. We've done a good job of expending it, and so we don't have to use ESSER funds for that, but a lot of other districts are doing that now. So imagine all these districts in the state of California, you know, purchasing technology to try to get these by September 30th will be one of, will be a district that's purchasing, not out of ESSER, but we need to get the items so that we're successful with whatever the board decides to implement.
No, yeah, I just wouldn't want to see a totally valid conversation about how we're using the devices impede our teachers' abilities to use them as is currently.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Noah or Mr. Margot?
Thank you. Look at those, just hitting a home run over there, Sophia, the questions. I, I think I, I've heard and read the community clearly on this, or at least the portion of the community that has chimed in. So know that I've heard and I'm listening. I, I don't think technology in the classroom should be a big part of the early education years. I do agree with that as well. I think there are instances where, as a tool, if it is beneficial to get through to a certain student, and you know that a student can cross a threshold that they're otherwise having trouble with because you used some software, great, great. That's the goal, right? To get students from A to B on an annual basis, whatever the grade may be. But I don't advocate for screen time. I, in fact, think that, I, I believe, and I will say it over and over again, that smartphones should be treated like automobiles, and nobody under 16 should have a smartphone. So I do hope that everybody who has written into us and is against this technology puts the same limitations on their older children as well, or if these are the older children, when they get older, remember the conversations in the letters you wrote about this, because I sincerely believe that a child does not need a smartphone. They don't need access to social media. They don't need any of that. I think that stuff is ruining the world, the world, not even the country, the world, okay? That being said, better to have it and not need it than need it and not have it. Okay? This is, this is a purchase out of the bond funds. I do advocate looking into this, Dr. Bregu, as you said, but I did traverse the district last year when I was president, doing my now Noah and No specials, and I saw in, for the exact reason that you're all wondering tonight, what is going on in our classrooms. I went, Ms. Kaber knows, I went into classrooms and saw what was going on on a daily basis. I will invite everybody, Horace Mann is having their open house on Thursday night. Go and see what elementary students are doing.
Did you see a lot of kids on screens?
No.
Did you see them on one-on-one like this?
No, and I saw all hand-created work all over the room.
And you saw kids interacting and doing three-dimensional work?
Yes, and being able to explain what they were doing. If you can ask a child what these projects are, and they will tell you what they are. I just, all, we have to educate ourselves before we make decisions. This is a minor decision. This is a $60,000, already preordained bond fund decision, okay? This is a no-brainer for me, because I was here when we made this part of, when we carved out this technology in the original bond, so I knew this was coming. But I would tell people, go to these classrooms at the elementary schools, see what students are doing. Open house is exactly that, open house. If you are wondering what K is doing with technology, go to the K classroom, see what the teachers have displayed, see what's going on. Please listen to me about this so you can get questions answered. Our, our board members, go to open house. Please check it out and see what's going on inside our classrooms. It's not, our classrooms are not technology-based. It's like, it's like Dr. Seaman said, that there are tools to learn, but we are not forming the curriculum around the tool. That's, that's what...
And you specifically deployed early educators, right, to a forum where they did what you call child-based developmental, right? You didn't send them, sorry, play-based. You didn't send them off to a camp to learn, what iPad games can we give the kids? No, parents will do that.
But then would you say that's a good use of our dollars if they're not being used?
Well, that's the thing. We're, we are using them for some grade levels.
Yes.
And we would, let's say the board decides, hey, let's not use these iPads over here. We can always then cancel one of our refreshes in the future, but this kind of disables us from being able to utilize these devices, but not necessarily just for that grade level. So there, one thing is ordering an item, the other thing is how you plan on using it, that's a different conversation.
One of the, one of the neatest things I've seen in technology that I'm just starting to experience on my professional level, one of the neatest things I've started to experience on my professional, I usually don't have to get this close. I got to get my inner Mrs. Marcus coming out tonight, is the ability for students to collaborate at the same time on different devices and be able to work with each other. It's amazing for the thinking process, as opposed to having to have a piece of paper and share it around and make notes or whatever. They could do it in real time. And I'm talking about older students, okay? I'm not talking about K through two. Talking about older students who are more developed with skills, all right? Like I said, I will reiterate, I strongly need, students strongly need the ability to get all of those skills down before they start using tools such as technology. I do, I sincerely believe that, too. Just like people should know, spelling has gotten horrible because of technology, by the way. I do believe that. Spelling is ridiculous, and people just, could just say, oh, spell checker, catch it. I, I despise that. I do despise that. So we still need to learn how to spell and look words up and understand that skill. Anyway, so I, I do recognize what, what is in front of us. I would support, if we need to get a report next year, a little bit more specific report about time on screen in, in the classrooms, great, but to the community, please go see what's going on in elementary classrooms, and then come back to us and say, you know what? I, I, you're right. It's okay. That's, because that's most likely for most teachers is what's going to happen. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Marcus?
Well, I, I've been sitting here listening to all of the arguments and the, the arguments from the community about the use of the computers and so on. I'm going back now to the order itself, because I think that's the thing that I'm a little bit interested in. It says that we're buying a total of 10 at $5,530, and I don't understand, and then it says something about 100, and the total price is $400. And I'm not sure what we're actually getting here. That's the number thing that I had on my mind when I saw this order to begin with. And of course, I also saw it being at the, for both the, both schools, and now I'm seeing that they've modified the agenda item, and it's only at one school, and it's going to be $60,000, which is, like, I, I agree with Mr. Margot about if we need it and we can't get it, or should we have it and not use it, or whatever. I'm torn by that. But I wanted to understand the order itself. Are we getting 10 new computers there? Or are we getting 100 at four?
It's a, 10, 10 packs. So it's, that's why it's, you're seeing 100.
It's like 100.
So it's 10, but it's 10 packs.
Oh, they're 10, and they're 10 packs? Okay, so they're, they're, and each pack is so that they're about $530 each, then, is what you're saying? Okay, I got that. Okay, the, the other thing, what is the $400? Is that, what is that? And that's a total of 100?
Some of that is the, the three-year Apple Care. That's the three-year Apple Care that we have for the devices.
Okay, all right. All right. So, how much indeed are we right now with these computers that we presently have? Is it an emergency right now that we buy computers so that we would have a chance to study the use of them during the next year?
So, so as I mentioned, it is, it is our refresh. We need to refresh the iPads.
They're in pretty bad shape.
So there's two different, so I want to kind of, the two different conversations, right? For this one, we're only talking about iPads. The other item is six to 12 devices that has computers.
I'm only talking about the TK...
Yes.
K1, 2.
So this one is for all the grade levels, TK through fifth grade. So it includes all of those. So what I was saying earlier is, if there's a decision to not use it in TK to two, then we'll use it only three, three, four, and five. we'll use it only three, three, four, and five. However, whatever the decision is, we'll, we'll follow that. But the issue is that we do need to make a refresh, like we need to refresh the devices.
They don't have iPads in three, four, and five. They use computers.
Yes, if we're not.
Okay, so we're going to continue? We can't, right? We can't have a forum format where everyone is just talking in because it will be her.
No, I, I.
So continue, Ms. Marcus?
I just want to clarify that. And Mrs. Kaber, can you?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can help a little bit. Sorry. Hi. Thank you for inviting me up.
Thank you.
Thank you for considering this. So just so we have some sense of what we're doing, you're totally right. TK through second grade have iPads that are one-to-one. And on top of that, we have other iPads in our school that are used for different pieces. So we can't meet computer science standards in classes like, like Makerspace without using technology.
As like a prerequisite.
Mrs. Kaber, this is a chance for us to buy, replenish our, for the, for the other use while we can still study whether we want to use them or how they're being used.
Yes. Is that, am I understanding? Yeah, so for example, there's like a set that live in Makerspace. Those are very old and need to be replaced. But remember that our fifth graders come in and show you those small, what are they called? They're like, their food trucks that they're three D-printed. They use TinkerCad on that and that is used on the iPad and not on their computer. So they don't take their own computer.
But that can also be for third, fourth, and fifth grades because they go to Makerspace also. We're not looking at just TK and so on.
Yes, yes. That's why we, that's why they're in both spaces. And that's why even though they have computers in their hands, they also might use, might use iPads in a different space to use a specific program.
Okay, now you've clarified in my mind.
And for two campuses, not just one.
This is not something that's strictly for TK through second grade.
Ms. Kaber, stay, I have some more questions. Okay.
Okay, so.
If you don't mind.
So, so the question is, if we don't have them now and we want to order them later, we may have trouble getting them in right now. So this is, I buy that argument. That's not a problem. I do wish that we will. I have visited classrooms. I've never seen, and maybe it's because I don't see them as much as I used to, I don't see excess use of the computers.
I haven't either.
I was limited to go around once I got elected to the school board.
Right.
So, but I, I do feel that if this is something that is used throughout the school, that it's something that we should spend our money on right now. But I want to clarify, the 100,000, the 100 computers, is there 100 for El Rodeo and 100 for Horseman? Or are we looking at only one school?
It's total.
It's both. Sorry, there was a, when it was uploaded, there was an error, but it's for both.
So are we looking at two orders then?
No, just one.
100 for the two elementary schools.
100, so it could be 50 and 50?
Yes. Depending on what's needed.
Now, okay, that was not clear.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so go ahead.
Just to be clear, like I think that most of them, from my understanding, are the ones that are going into Makerspace Science and for special education students. Like we need to provide them for where they're needed. That's part of their IEPs. When they say, part of the IEP says that if we need to provide any technology that's needed. So that is also part of that, like an assistive technology device, communication device, any of those pieces. That's why we're talking about small numbers of those pieces. So if you think about 50 at each site, whereas when, if we needed to refresh the whole grade level, we would be talking about a much larger number.
That's why, okay. Thank you, I have my answer. I'm ready. Go ahead.
Can I ask a few questions? Okay. So, so as a public school, we have the California frameworks and the California standards, right? And those are the things that, they're sort of our marching orders for what we have to introduce, you know, by virtue of living in California and, you know, attending public school. So can you share with us? Because I am not familiar, like what the early strands are for the, you know, the youngest subset? Like what is the expectation of us as a public school for that?
Well, you're talking about TK.
Yeah.
So TK, we use preschool foundations as part of our standards. They're, they're not part of the kindergarten through 12th grade standards. It used to be that we considered TK a two-year developmental kindergarten program. And then when we changed to what we called UTK or made it younger, we really moved to a preschool foundation. So there, there's, there's not, there's not many that I know on top, on the top of my head that are part of technology, although we did use technology as part of our program when we got our early childhood credential. That was part of like learning how to integrate it into our classrooms. So one of the things that TK does is we use a program called Hegarty, which is all phonemic awareness. And it really helps us with, to show a video, not to use the one-on-one iPads, but to show a video of like how we form our mouths and how we make sentences and how we make word sounds. That's a part of using technology. So there's, there is, I would say, less, if, if any at all, use for one-to-one devices in TK. There's, it's limited, I would say. That being said, like there's compute, there's computer science and technology requirements in our framework, starting in kindergarten, starting, starting there. And we just adopted Danielson. There's an entire component about being a distinguished educator in Danielson that's connected to the use of technology in our classrooms. So we need to remember about how we're using all of the different pieces together. So I'm really interested in the idea of studying, how do we use it? How much time do we spend on it? How do we ask? We've shown a lot of growth in iReady and we've, we've already come to show that to you. I know that we're going to show more when we meet in two weeks. I know that we're going to show more in iReady. We can't do that and show you that growth without asking our students to use the program throughout the course of the school year. And I'm sorry if they don't like it so much, but sometimes we spend time on, on some academic things that I want to be hearing from other students who are enjoying it and maybe they're using it to see like their own learning and their own growth. But I think that if you'll engage in like some actual conversations about how we're using it, how much we're using it, and that feedback, that will get some really good information for everyone.
Okay, and then just another question. A parent wrote to me and they estimated that the, per week, they thought that their kindergarten student maybe used 15 minutes on Friday or something like that, 15 minutes a week. Does that sound about right or?
Yeah, I think it's pretty limited. I would say that Mr. Seaman helped us conduct a survey about, from all of our.
Right, there was a survey, yeah.
And so the average came out to be a half an hour a week. I would definitely.
A week.
Oh, half, sorry, a half an hour a day, half an hour a week.
No, it's, it's, I'm starting to blow up. It's half hour daily.
Half hour daily. So I think it depends on what it looks like. There is some requirement around iReady that we're using it 45 minutes twice, two different 45-minute chunks or two different, like finishing two different lessons in iReady for each grade level per week. That's for reading and for math. So that's part of the whole program with iReady. And then on top of that, some work with create, creating story works or using it as part of either listening to reading, like, don't forget, we don't have like books on tape in the same way that we did when we were young. So if they're at a center and the younger kids and they're reading to themselves or listening to a story being read to them, they're on that iPad with headphones, like watching the book and be, having it read to you. Like that's the kind of information that I'd want to know. How much of that time? I would probably say the 15 minutes a week is the time that they're spent on like free choice games.
Right.
And everything else that they're using, if they're using it, I don't know the exact number. I can't tell you standing here what's the exact number of minutes that's academic and that we're asking them to do. But I'm definitely interested in, in telling you where that is and how do we define it differently and put it into different buckets.
Okay.
Does that help?
Thank you.
I mean, yeah. It helps because I appreciate your disclosure, but it just alarms me more because we still don't understand what are the long-term and short-term benefits of this. Like we know that it's fun to be on the iPad, but the iPad learning and education is proven. National Institutes of Health, it's superficial learning. And the detriment is so much, there are so many more detriments than positives. And I, I researched and thank you, Dr. Breggy, for presenting it to me, the California computer standards. And it's true, it doesn't even speak to TK. So then the question is, why are we paying for iPads for TK if TK is not going to use them? Number one. Then number two, especially when we see that we need our dollars for other things, like what was brought up tonight. I mean, come on, guys.
Different dollars.
It is different dollars, but at the end of the day, it all comes and goes into the same pot. You take it from here and you put it there. We're, we are in, with these bond dollars, we are going to be short and for two years, we're going to have to take a loan. And we are going to be paying interest on those dollars. We're going to have a certificate of, of participation. At this point today, my, my high net worth clients are getting interest rates at seven, seven and a half percent at best. Everybody trying to get an SBA loan is at 10 or 11%. So I'm just letting my colleagues know that every bond dollar that you are putting toward an unused iPad is something that we're going to be paying interest on until the state modernization funds come. And so please, the mindset that the bond is this ATM that's limitless and that we can just order this and order that and have it in case we need it, this is not the right mindset. This is not fiscally responsible, you know? And then when you look at the California computer science standards, which are recommendations, we don't have to meet every recommendation. In the K2, K through two bunch of recommendations, it's all conceptual. None of it requires an iPad. And what I, what I really am trying to say here is the most is not the best. And we know this. We know that we are in an area where it's very possible to spoil our children. We're not doing them favors by handing them these one-to-one devices.
But Judy, that's not, that's not what is happening.
That's what's happening. We're having one-to-one devices. We were told earlier.
Right, but they're not like a phone that someone's putting in their pocket.
It doesn't matter. What, why does a TKer need a phone?
Well, they don't.
This is not, those are apples to.
But Judy, right now, I, I support everything you say about what you're saying. But the problem is, is that we're not buying these, we're supplying teapads for kids that are in third, fourth, and fifth grade. This is a refresh.
So now in Beverly Hills, we're so rich and we're so wealthy that not only do all of our third grade and up kids get their own device, but the taxpayer pays for them to ensure that they have one-to-one devices in all of their specialist classes.
Well, Glendale that has 35,000 students has that. They have, and they have, they have Chromebooks, but it's touch-based, so they can also do that.
But we are, we need to be ahead of the curve.
And I would, I would submit, I would submit that if we don't take advantage of educational technology, that we will not be 21st century learners.
We will be 21st century learners.
Well, I don't, I think that absolutely there are adverse effects.
Even by virtue of the fact that the iPad usage sunsets at the second grade and then we move to the laptops demonstrates that the iPad becomes obsolete. Because if the iPad was worthwhile, then the iPad would continue to 12th grade. But the iPad sunsets and then we move on to the third grade devices.
Right. Well, there's a different skillset though for kids typing and.
And we can agree to disagree.
I don't, I think we're having a curriculum conversation on top of a money conversation. And I like, I really understand that you're charged with both things.
I'm having a leadership conversation. This is about leadership.
Noah, were you going to?
No, I was just going to say that, that if, if we move forward tonight.
Yep.
Because it sounds like these particular iPads are not being used for one-to-one. These are being used for general usage in other areas, right?
That's correct.
Right. And that, and that, that every student is, is affected by this purchase. Then we can reevaluate, look at the program, look at it, and, and when the next refresh comes around for K to two, that's when you can say, no, we don't need it then. They already have it now. They're all using it now. That you can't pull back on, right? It's, it's, the next time it comes up, we'll have enough details that you're talking about tonight to make an informed decision whether we want to keep that, whether we just want the small amount of iPads for the, the Makerspace and stuff like that and take them out of the one-to-one in the earlier grades, okay? That, that's something to look forward to looking into.
I will be voting no on the iPads, but I appreciate your suggestion and I hope that we can all agree that that's what needs to be done.
We, we are all in the same page about researching this and educating ourselves and the community in how these things are being utilized.
Shall we move forward with a vote then?
Please, call the question.
So all in.
Call for names.
Oh, yes. Okay.
Roll call, you want to roll call?
Yes. Sophia. Yes. Noah.
Yes.
Judy.
No.
Ms. Marcus?
Yes.
And I am a yes? All in favor?
No, we just did.
Okay, so the, the motion.
I'm not voting twice in A and Chicago. Hey.
Okay. Motion, hey, motion passes four to one and a provisional vote from Sophia.
Three to one.
Three to one, sorry, three to one. And we are going on to report.
Okay, we're on nine F. I'll make a motion to approve the six through 12 grade technology purchase.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
No.
Is there a discussion?
Somebody pulled it, they have to explain.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, so, yes, I pulled these items because I would like to share that we have had a lot of complaints from parents, and Dr. Breggy and I have talked about this too, that some of the devices are being used for purposes other than education. And I, there's no dispute for the need for laptops because clearly, starting from age third grade, the state is delivering testing on the laptops. So unless we boycott the state of California, we're taking the tests. Okay, so putting that aside, see, we are on, we are on the same team. So entirely rational and reasonable. But I think that we do need to respect that the families are, have been sharing with us that the students are abusing and the parents are unable to control the use. And so you hear about the kids using them for YouTube all day, for gaming and things like that. I've spoken to our director of tech and it seems like it's a little bit of a challenge, like if I'm understanding correctly. For example, if the teacher is showing an educationally related video on YouTube, then that means that the students have access to YouTube. And then that means that then therefore they can use YouTube for other purposes. And so I am just asking if we can look into how to better control the use of the devices. And I know we can always say, hey, hey, parent, your student is doing this, it's your fault, it's on you. But the parent is not in control of our school laptops, we are in control of them. And I, I do think that when the parents ask us for help, it's better to help.
No, absolutely. And I want to respond to that because the conversation that we had and then that I had with Ms. Sosi and then with Dr. Seaman and just in our cabinet is that we are going to work with our principals again to see like how often this is happening. Because it, it takes a lot to be able to go around our, the, the filters that we have, those kids that are, when that's brought to our attention, is, it's a couple of things. One of them is the fact that just working with our teachers, this is a classroom management issue. So this is teachers up and around engaging in the classroom to ensure that students aren't onto something. I know that there's a way to plug in a flash drive that can help students circumvent the filter that we have. So now that we know that, then we act on that. So now that we know that, then we act on that. But also, one of the differences going to the Chromebook is it actually provides us with a greater level of security than we've had before, so that students cannot get around that filter. So this is added security for us.
I want to ask our expert witness here.
It's better for the, just the, just the cyber safety of the school district, but also, but it doesn't negate the fact that this is also a human issue as well, as far as a classroom management issue that we all need to stay aware of, and we need to be aware, just like parents at home keeping their eye on what's happening, the same expectation is in place for teachers, that they know where their teacher, where their students are going on the computer.
Can I ask, Sophia, I would like to know your take on that. You don't have to snitch on any of your friends, but you're the insider.
No, it's, it's not even necessary, cause in my experience, the way more common problem is the filters put in place by, I don't know, the G Suite or IT, blocking out educational resources that students need to access on YouTube and even not.
Yes.
An issue that happens all the time, certain previous, like, materials from teachers is like repertoires will be blocked out, or a lot of YouTube videos mostly that we need to access are, so it's more like hypercensored, but.
Yeah.
Can I just speak, sorry, just-
No, yeah.
There is also a difference between a high schooler and a middle schooler, and, and tho, and elementary. So those comments that I shared are more based in, you know, eighth and younger grades.
Yep, I understand.
Yeah, um, in my experience, at least at the high school level, technology usage in the classroom is super case-by-case with the teacher, but ultimately up to the student to decide how they want to use it and how often, which a lot of teachers will design their curriculum to either not need it, so you have no reason to be on it, and they'll make you put it away. Or you need it for school, and a lot of teachers use software, as we know this, to monitor what the students are doing in real time. It's not that big a, I mean, the school computers that were given are, aside from regular wear and tear, not the highest functioning. And just, it's just a fact of life that they need to be regularly refreshed. I just got this new one after a couple months of waiting for a new one. It was, I know, a pretty big issue during AP testing these past couple weeks of students with broken laptops just not being able to get new ones because there were no working ones to replace them with, so.
That's not good.
Yeah, no, not good. Yeah.
So, Dr. Bregge, you were saying that you've been working with Ms. Sosi, and is there, like, some sort of remedy or?
Well, I mean, when this is brought to our attention, certainly, we need to see how widespread of an issue this is, but it is certainly a responsibility for us to ensure that we know where our students are on our devices. We have really good security. So, I mean, we are, it is, as Sophia said, oftentimes, we're spending more time having to approve certain sites that, that looked as, and appeared as if that would be filtered out, but it was actually a legitimate site. We actually spend more time on that. But we have things in place too for the Google Suite, and we have Gaggle that is helpful when students are, you know, typing things that they shouldn't be in there, as well as the games. And it, it's pretty hard to get around that system. The, where we have seen it is what was brought up when you have a flash drive and you're able to kind of plug in and go around that filter, but that's, we just have to educate our staff about that, when that's happening. That's certainly our responsibility to keep an eye on that, just as if it is to ensure that they're staying on task with whatever they're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just like to ask one question about the differences in the computers that we're ordering. Why, I don't know who's here and can answer the question.
Sure, so some of them are for students, some of them are for teachers, so, and, and some of them are just for different specialties. So that's why, that's, you're seeing differences in types of computers.
I see, thank you. Cause I noticed 143, that's probably one for teachers that, that, okay.
Is that good? Call, yeah, call for the question? Okay, roll call vote. Ms. Lipson?
Yes.
Mr. Margot?
Yes.
Ms. Menaschery?
Yes.
And Dr. Stern is a yes. Motion passes. Five and O, well, four and O, and provisional vote from Ms. Lipson. Brings us to reports, right? Student Board Member Report, your last one.
Oh, my bad, thank you. Okay. Sorry, so, right off the heels, as I was saying, of National Appreciation and Fire Service Day at the high school, well, the high school hosted Justin Case Beverly Hills, a team from the Fire Department for an event for MSA and KBEV members. This was put on by our very own Colby Galardian as part of his MSA Independent Project, so major kudos to him because I think this was an amazing sort of tie-in to that holiday and the educational content of it all. This was a really, really impressive event put on, like I said, in correlation with Justin Case Beverly Hills, where they hosted a team from the organization to engage in emergency preparedness procedures with the students in multiple sessions, including fire extinguisher training and tours of fire trucks and paramedic trucks. Very, very good, basic emergency preparedness knowledge, and a very, very amazing event put on by one of our students. Okay. And then I have some of the bigger ones up here, but like I said, an absolute flurry of events wrapping up at Beverly Hills High School as we approach graduation for the seniors. We've had a couple events in the past couple weeks, like the Senior Boat Race, our second annual one, which was a total blast, and a real high point in terms of school spirit and class spirit. Our pen and party was last week, that the PTSA did an amazing job of bringing in a taco truck and music to really help celebrate everyone and where they got in, where they're going. Just a really, really fun capstone event. And then lastly, not to push it up here, is the BHHS Atelier Fashion Show, which if you didn't get the privilege of seeing in person, I absolutely implore everyone to go watch the live stream of that, which is available on KBEV, because this event, I think gets more and more impressive and spectacular every year. The theme this year was 50 Years of Hip-Hop, which is so, like, inspirational and was so cool to see our students take on. Their participation is all over, from visual performers during it, to our own students walking as models, and of course, designing the clothes. Absolutely like Beverly Hills-level production, to say the least, yeah. And then up here just last weekend was prom, so photo's still rolling in from that one. This was, we sold, I believe, 30-ish more tickets than last year. We had about 350 students in, in attendance in total. A great success, ASB perspective. It was so fun watching our senior class plan this event from literally last year and all through this year, just seeing the fruit of their labor really come through. It was at the Avalon again. As you can see, the theme was Masquerade, and it looked spectacular, and I think went off without a hitch. Was really, really fun. And then, lastly, coming up, we have graduation, obviously, followed by a couple of scholarship ceremonies in the next couple weeks. And yeah, wrapping things up. Okay, this is such a fun little highlight of our educational excellence and curriculum. I was made aware of recently. So, as you can see here in all of the text, basically, our audio production class at the high school got together, and in collaboration with, I think, both kids in and out of the class, created their first cover with a, with a accompanying music video. They have a collective name of Teenage Robot going, and they did a cover of Alien Love Call, which is by Turnstile. And can I play this video? Okay, like, oh my gosh, get ready. We'll see. Oh, wait. Okay, wait, let's see if we can have the audio working. Hmm? Hmm. Okay. Um? Um, yeah, let's see. Oh. Hmm. Yeah, so close. Okay. Maybe I'll play it from my computer, cause I really want you guys to see this, okay? Okay. Yeah. I'm, I apologize to everyone who worked on this for the horrible quality of that presentation. I blame it on my horrible malfunctioning school laptop.
There you go. There you go.
And yet, um, yeah, so. So just to shout out a couple of the people in audio production who worked on that, with the help of Mr. Brightman, oh, not yet?
Yeah.
Yes, and Mr. Mitchell in the back, of course. No, with the help of our amazing audio production team, this was put together by, with Izzy Sapphire on vocals, Nathan Horowitz on keyboard, Casper Cox on guitar, Morgan Stern on the drums, and then with fellow contributions from Louis McKinley, Amin Mohammedeshi, Mason Halavi, and Andrew Yang with, who made the video. Just, like, I, you guys should really go watch it again on your own, because this is not, this is not that. Like, the amount of technology and, like, actual industry standard work that these kids are doing and went into that video is so crazy. It plays in the hallways now regularly, like, on a loop, walking around, and it's so cool to see. Yeah, oh yeah, it's up, like, in the library, like, yeah, absolutely. So, this is just like the start, I think, of a lot of really cool work coming out of our Music Industry Center, so, yeah, absolutely fantastic, yeah. Okay, um, next up, I wanted to highlight a couple of the things happening at the middle school, because they're doing great right now. So, um, in collaboration with the ASB team down there, who is, like I said, just doing a fantastic job of wrapping up the end of the year and putting on events, they're, at the middle school coming up, they are helping to put on a Royer Studios Animation PSA Workshop for anti-vaping, which sounds very promising, and is really commendable on the part of the student government there for contributing to that effort. And then they are working towards this Thursday's Annual Spring Into Summer Event, which should be an absolute blast. I've always heard, I wasn't at BV when this, I believe, started, but this event, I've always heard great things about and gets great reviews every year, so should be absolutely amazing. And then lastly, ASB is supporting all around campus this week, our D1 Boys and D2 Girls Soccer Teams, who both made it to playoffs. So, I mean, I didn't realize this, um, school sports seasons were still going on down there, but absolutely fantastic news that we have at least one D1 team. So, yeah. And then? Championship Monday night, there you go. Amazing.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
The boys lost today.
Ah.
The boys lost today.
The boys lost today?
Today, they lost.
Oh, very nice. An exciting game, for sure.
What grade level is your championship team?
Division one, the sixth, seventh, eighth grade.
Seventh.
All right, well.
Fantastic.
So Ms. Lipson, that was your last, but most spectacular report.
Oh, yeah.
One of your good ones, as always. People want to go around and?
Oh, um, there was just one more thing about the Hawthorne alum goodbye, but, yeah, we all know about that one. I'm sure I'll see most, if not all of you there, and, yeah, I think it's just, like, as we all get, like, kick into next gear, I think, with the El Rodeo events, which are so, so exciting. Shout-outs to BHGF for the event they put on last week at the campus honoring Lily Bossy, that was spectacular. But I think it's really easy to get caught up in all of those, obviously, and so I think this is going to be an amazing event for the community, sort of to reflect on Hawthorne's legacy, and just come together in a really celebratory and special moment. So, yeah, that wraps it up, I think.
All right. Mr. Margot, would you like to?
I think I heaped enough praise earlier. No, thank you.
The quote is up.
Thank you for the update.
Didn't know there was a limit.
I have prom pictures, if anybody wants to see them. Thanks.
Thank you again, I really would love to take a picture when we're done tonight, if you can. Thanks.
I'm gonna miss you. I love you.
Thank you, as always, and I know we will see you around. Okay.
And definitely stay in touch with us, because you made a huge difference on all of our lives. Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to our Superintendent Report.
Great. Thank you very much, and as they're doing this transition, so I'm gonna try to pull it together here. I was, I was just notified that my golden retriever was just attacked by a pit bull, so. I live on North Palm, so I'll be coming for a pit bull this evening when I get home. So I don't have any details, but I'm, I'm just, I just learned that, so I'm gonna try to pull this together for this.
Is he okay?
I don't know. So I will find out shortly. So let me just, let me, let me go through this, and, and then I'm gonna find out. So, I really appreciate the, the activities, and usually that's something that I get to talk about too. It would make the report way too long to talk about all of the end-of-the-year activities, so thank you for doing such a thorough job. I'm going to really kind of tee this up a little bit as we get ready. We're in a, in a place now where we are going to start looking at just the strategic plan, the, the final wrap-up to the strategic plan, so this is kind of teeing this up a little bit. And I want us to think back to opening day for our staff when we were all present, and we had a really good time, it was a celebration to kick off. We had the whole Taylor Swift scenario, they, we were, we had that whole vibe going on, and I had an opportunity then to just kind of talk about some of the bigger issues, and, and I'm glad that we continue to communicate like we are, because as you can see, some of these same conversations keep coming up, and this evening, this gives me an opportunity, just kind of through a state of the district, to kind of give you an update where we're at, and it's really just setting the page for our next meeting, which will be on June 4th, which will be our strategic plan meeting that we have, and then following after that will be some, an opportunity for board feedback. So I just want to start with, as I do most formal kind of presentations, we, we did in the very beginning of the year, as we will at the end of the year, just go back and recommit ourselves to the mission and vision that we have set forward to make sure that we are on the right path. And something I don't get to do very often is just thank our team, and so this is not an exhaustive list by any means, but the partnership that we have with the city, my work with the board, the cabinet, it's just, it's really endless work, and it's really satisfying work, and we're really doing great things. So I really want to acknowledge, since I don't get the opportunity to do that very often, all the people on our leadership team, our, our principals in our schools, administrators here at the district office, you know, every year brings more and more mandates, more reporting, more audits, just, just more requirements, and we always rise to the level that we are expected to, and just a, just a sincere thank you to everybody on, on our team. So we're getting ready, the next meeting, we've done quarterly updates, this will be the final that are, that's coming up, that will have some additional information for you. This is kind of just where we are in the, in the timeline, so that you can see. This has grown over the years, especially this last year, based on board feedback about wanting to have additional touchpoints. So you can see the additional meetings that are here that are more check-in meetings, and I'm really glad to have these here, because it's really, it's been really measured for us, but it's given us a really good cycle, this communication loop, so to speak, so that we are talking about academics, we're talking about social-emotional learning throughout the entire year, and not just the beginning and the end. And if you remember, it was just a few years ago where we had a beginning, and then we had an end. We would just kick us off, but then we would just do a final check-in, and we didn't have that dialogue that's been created, especially this last, this last year, so I'm really appreciative of that. It's certainly helpful for us. Just, I'm gonna touch base just on a, a few areas here at the district, just education services under the leadership of Dr. Seaman, and some of the things that you've heard about already today, but, but certainly over the last- under the leadership of Dr. Seaman. Um, and some of the things that you've heard about already today, but, but certainly over the last several months. Um, the professional learning communities, uh, we had a professional development day. Uh, Mr. Mike Maddow's led that off for us, and this is really the, this opportunity to put in a really organized way opportunities for our educators to have conversations with one another about what's working, what's not working. And we're, we're putting a, you have to create the environment in order to have the professional conversations. And there is a framework for that, and we've been trained on how to use that. And our teachers and our instructional aides and our, our administration has really put forth an effort to ensure that we're following the most successful model that's out there in PLCs, and that will continue into next year. And that's something that gets refined and better each year. Um, I know that you heard some information about iReady that may have not been so great from a student's perspective, but, um, from an educator's perspective, we are really having an opportunity, as we talked about before, having that data. So we're, that data was available, but it wasn't really being used. And it was being shared, but people didn't know how to use it. And so with this new data set, where the board's been very supportive, is that we're getting from iReady and through NWEA, which you will hear about, uh, in our strategic plan meeting, this really is the crux of what we do. We cannot change the instruction. We can't have that influence what we do as administrators or that the teachers in the classroom without this information. It's that vital that we have it. So we're pretty excited that we're finally have narrowed in on a couple of areas where we're going to get this data, and we will use it throughout the year. Um, the CGI math is something that you've heard about, and the board has been very, uh, supportive of that. Um, this is a model of math that's really student-centered at the elementary level. Um, and it really is helpful for critical thinking, um, problem-solving, those areas that kids struggle in. This is an area that, again, a model that's being used, where teachers have been trained. Um, in fact, new teachers coming on will get additional training, uh, so that they are caught up. But this is a model that is working, and we're really excited about that at the elementary level. You may have noticed just increased family events throughout the school year. Um, in addition to our science fairs, our math nights, the literacy nights, um, we have more evening participation for our families in different ways, and, um, and it's with our partnership with our PTAs as well. But we're seeing more of those evening events that are more academic and opportunities for students to show their work, share their work, um, but then also share with families what our students are learning in the classroom. Um, we've talked before about national board certification, and I think this is just, just, you know, one of so many highlights that you're going to be hearing about with the strategic plan. Um, in the district, we went from having three teachers that were nationally board certified to now, uh, 15 teachers in the district have that national board certification. Uh, so certainly, uh, a, a big kudo for the district for having this, this, this type of, um, you know, rigorous certification for our teachers. Uh, and then also the Danielson Framework, which we, we've talked about before with the evaluation cycle, which is new to many of, uh, the teachers and administrators here in the district. Several of us have used the Danielson Framework, um, and it's really a great model. It's a very reflective model, and it's one that, that teachers and administrators can demonstrate growth from using this correctly. And so, uh, that training that is occurring for our teachers and our staff and our administrators for the evaluation process to, uh, to really work and to, um, again, improve our instruction and improve the way that we work with students, uh, we'll be sharing that information with you, uh, throughout the next year as we begin that cycle. Um, Student Services, you've heard, uh, uh, over the years about just areas of, um, in Student Services with chronic absenteeism. We've talked about, um, how we're able to provide, uh, intervention for our students and also even with behavior. So there has been tremendous work in Student Services. Um, we are really focusing on and, and training from, Student Services has been just spot-on. As far as helping our administration to make sure that we're coding things the right way, that we're looking at, um, how things are defined and then reported. There's a lot of room for error when you have different schools that are looking at things in different ways. And we have had the best training, uh, to help us, and not only has that training been, uh, effective, but also Student Services with Ms. Collins Williams and Dr. Waldrop would, would actually attend and go to schools and share information and engage in dialogue about how, um, these items are being reported and how these areas are being improved. We've taken PBIS, uh, the interventions that we're doing, we've put them into multi-tiered systems of support. So instead of just calling it, um, by that intervention, uh, it is MTSS, and it is, uh, an area where collectively, uh, that we're looking at what's best for students as far as how we can support them. Uh, the district level and family support that we're providing families. This, uh, is, it goes back to a lot of the services, uh, again, with the support of the board, um, that we are able to provide better services for our staff, um, whether it's through the Maple Counseling Center, maybe it's, uh, through our counseling department at each of our schools, uh, but also even just with the position, uh, of Ms. Samadi with, uh, meeting with our parents as our liaison, who has taken on a full workload of, of cases to work with us, and we're already seeing, um, a lot of success early on. Um, also, as I mentioned, just with, uh, discipline and the, the, the disciplined data chats that we've had, conversations again about how we're coding things, um, how, uh, we're able to then look at that data and then make improvements. Instead of waiting for reports to come back at the end of the year, um, we really have now a way, real time, to look to see if the information is being collected the right way and, and how that's being reported. And then not only that, but also using that information in real time to help support students and families. Um, we have expanded our mental health and wellness support services. As you know, we've done that, uh, through the Bulldog Aid Center, and we're now starting to explore a new area. And so we know that one of the best, um, parts of our, what through reconfiguration is, is the pathways and looking at things not just at a high school or just a middle school, but really from our elementary schools through our high school. And so we're, we're looking now at what type of support can we start providing students at the earliest ages, and that is at our elementaries. And we're, so we're looking to see with the, with the existing staff that we have, how can we, uh, put a support team together for students and families? And what this does for us is this gives us this, this opportunity for our families and students early on to know what type of support is, is available and expected. And when that's done at an elementary level, then that shows parents and students where they can get help and when they can get help and who from, uh, earlier on, and still, instead of waiting until high school and getting to the Norman Aid Center. So this has been, um, a huge, uh, change. It's been a great development and expansion over the district TK through 12. Uh, in Personal Services, uh, under Dr. Horvath's leadership, uh, this is no small task. And, uh, Ms. Castan is here this evening as she has, uh, very diligently attended our meetings, uh, over the last several years. Um, and this is just, uh, you know, we have four different bargaining units that we're working with. We have, uh, completed, uh, successful negotiations with two, so our BHGE and then also with CSEA. And then we're very, very close to finishing, um, the, the contracts for, uh, two other organizations, our, our instructional assistants, um, and, uh, also with, um, the OTBS, I believe. Uh, no small task to do them all in one year. I talked about the new year teacher, uh, the new teacher evaluation that's going to be starting, and so we will be reporting some more information on, uh, this has been i- in the works for quite some time. I know that this has been a discussion since, um, I arrived in the district is how are we looking at quality teachers? How are we recognizing the excellent teaching that's happening in the classroom? And then how are we also then providing help and providing support, um, and, um, uh, training perhaps for, um, some teachers, depending on how well they're doing in their classroom? And we, we have a really good tool here, as we've talked about, that's really solid, that is, uh, embraced throughout the country. And, um, we are looking forward to starting this cycle with our teachers and then also reporting back to the board. Um, one thing that we've also talked about as well is looking to see how can we use perhaps an administrative model that is then aligned towards the administration and the job responsibilities that the administration has, uh, using Danielson's work. And so we are out there and we're exploring to see if that works. Um, I can tell you that we, it's been very successful for us, the work that we've done. You know, that Dr. Seaman's been contacted already about doing some conference presentations with the work that we've done. Uh, there's been so much additional work beyond just with the framework for teachers that has been developed that, um, that we're being recognized for, uh, that quality of work. And, um, and that's being shared with other educators throughout, uh, California, which is a really good thing and a really good reflection on the process that we've used. Uh, in Business Services, uh, as you know, that there has been, um, a very positive and a very, uh, different approach with our Business Services and the, the work that, uh, Mr. Guzman is doing, um, in the committee work. I have the benefit of being able to sit on every committee, so, um, when I come in and it's a finance committee, there's just an incredible vibe of, of transparency and appreciation and really a new level of understanding, if I could be so blunt about that. It's, the school finance is not something that's so easy to follow. And, and I can tell you that this, this committee, this group of, um, of, of public community members is, has not always been the easiest group over the years. But if you deliver things in a way that are understandable and you ask people what they want and in what format they want it, that's the approach that Mr. Guzman has used. And so that's been really helpful. That has changed, um, a lot of, of, of minds. It's changed the culture of this committee. Um, and so hats off to Mr. Guzman for that approach, because people are learning a lot and they are, uh, being educated in a way that they haven't before, and they're really understanding a lot of the decisions that were made. As you know, financial audits, uh, those seem to be, uh, with mandates. There's more and more reporting. But we continue to get exemplary, uh, remarks, uh, reviews, um, and we've had fewer findings, uh, than we have ever have since I've been in the school district now. Um, and we jump on those findings right away. We take them seriously. And we really get to a point where we're analyzing findings so that we can make those improvements in the future. But there's very few and far between, uh, findings, and that's just super refreshing. And again, very transparent and very validating, I think, to the work that we're doing here. Um, and of course, the strategic plan, uh, you'll be hearing, uh, that area and that update at our next meeting as well. Um, the site budget meetings, another approach that Mr. Guzman has used is, is really one that, much like Student Services, going out to our schools, um, and having conversations with, uh, our principals and those that are impacted by these budget meetings. And it's, it's really refreshing to see this happen at each site level. It's often difficult when we have our leadership team, team meetings to have a, a, a budget meeting when you have people at different schools in different roles. And so this has personalized, uh, the budget process, which I, I think a lot of people didn't understand before, and then also gives them that one-on-one attention. Um, and that's been, uh, a really nice change that we've seen and, and something that, uh, I'd be remiss if I didn't share that with you. Um, I've talked about the reporting. Um, we used to be a place where, um, I can tell you that people didn't want to do business with, uh, Beverly Hills Unified. Um, and it was due to the fact that it, it was being delayed when we were making payments to vendors, um, that, that it was such a, a bureaucracy to get, um, to get the processed and to get things paid and, and, and produced through the, the entire department. Um, and that has changed remarkably. We now don't have that same problem we had before where we had trouble getting people to, um, uh, want to work with us. It's the other way around. People have noticed a, a vast difference in, um, how they are being paid, how they're being treated when they're called, when, if they've called the business office, and, um, and that says a lot. That's been a very big reflection on our entire school district. Um, and then also just with policies, uh, as you know, uh, not only in Business Services, we're almost finished, uh, giving those, uh, updates and working with the board. And, and I can tell you that hands down, we are ahead of every other school district in a 200-mile radius of here with our board policy. So I'm super excited about that. Um, and quickly, just, um, with our ESS service, you know that we've had additional training through BEST and just the, the capability that we have now working through, um, our systems so that, that, again, through the transparency, the ease of technology that we have, uh, this, uh, available for our employees, that, that really, most of the questions that the employees have, they should be able to see themselves in their own documents. And now Student Services, I'm sorry, Business Services has made that very easy. And, uh, people have this opportunity now to look at their own financial information as employees. Uh, Technology Department, I think we've, uh, talked probably more than enough on technology. But I can tell you that, that in our closed sessions, uh, under security, we have had discussions with the board about the potential of, uh, cyber security issues. And, uh, this is happening all over the state, it's all over the country, um, that businesses and organizations and school districts are not immune to this at all, uh, that the hacking into our computer systems with personal information is a real threat. And it's happened to school districts around us. Um, and, uh, we are, uh, putting many measures into place, as many layers of security as we possibly can. And we've actually gone a step further. So we, we've actually created a disaster recovery plan because what is happening with businesses and school districts, they have, um, uh, they don't know what to do after there's been some sort of leak. They just, they don't, they don't really know. And, and, and most especially, school districts been, they've been left, uh, really not knowing what to do and not knowing what kind of personal information has been released. And so much like a security plan that we would have for our schools, we have, uh, and, and that's for like our physical safety when we are doing lockdowns and those types of procedures, we actually have the same type of procedure. It's a disaster recovery plan that is for if there is some sort of cyber attack in the district. Um, with the help of, um, our Business Services Office, um, Mr. Ellis, uh, in particular, who is, uh, tasked with the JPA, which is no small task, uh, which is a, uh, very large rental agreement, if you want to look at it in those terms, uh, for all of our facilities that are used by the city. And so, um, as we started this year, um, it, we have, we came to an agreement, um, which was, uh, an increase for the school district, but a really fair agreement with the city. And, um, this is now, having this timing of being this, this, when this was settled earlier this year, this really opened the door then for the conversations that we're going to be having with the city that we already started, which is, uh, around the Early Childhood Center. This needed to happen first, and it did. And now we're looking at, as we're moving, um, Hawthorne to El Rodeo, providing that opportunity for the city to look at the Hawthorne property, not only for their preschool program, but then also for, uh, perhaps after-school programming or any adult programming, um, or really any other programming that, that we can use in the city. And it's a great partnership, and, um, we are, we're working with them, and, and you'll be hearing more about that, uh, as we go into the next school year. Huge successes with our, with athletics. Um, as you can see up here, I won't read through them all, but this was a, a really great summary of the successes, the championships, um, the finals. but this was a really great summary of the successes, the championships, the finals, this really gives you an idea that we are competitive athletically at the high school and we've had really great success and that celebration seems to be growing and our sports continue to improve. At the high school, if you just think back just to a few years ago, we didn't have any athletic program at our middle school and so this is an incredible list of accomplishments that have happened just in the last couple of years and really thankful to our middle school staff, also working with Mr. Ellis, to really build a program from scratch and it literally was from scratch and working with FIA and we've actually, not only has this helped our students, but we've really helped the whole league because it's, you can't find a lot of middle schools that have this comprehensive of an athletic program. So, we were really welcomed to commit to FIA and to begin to compete because we are now just another school that we were able to provide competition to other schools and that's how our kids get better, that's how our coaches get better and this continues to grow each We've talked about safety, security, I just want to let you know with security in particular, we've really looked this year at our SRO program, our work with our school resource officers and we really, when we started to work with our SROs, there was no real job description, there was kind of a, we work well together, but you kind of work over here, we kind of work over here, we'll let you know when we need you and we wanted to change that paradigm and so we were able to meet with Chief Stainbrook and really come up with a job description that is not only holds people accountable, but really provides some direction so that it's not you do this, I do that, there are times, more times than not, that we have to work together and so really very, very thankful to Officer Maitland and Officer Rudy who have, both are committed to come back next year and they're excited to. It's nice to have a team of our SROs come back two years in a row and we're going to be able to see that, we're very excited. Our surveillance system, as you know, we have a great arrangement through our JPA with the city as far as providing cameras. We are now at a place where we are adding additional cameras to places that were left, there were kind of holes. We've had the security system long enough to know where we need to make improvements and where we need to add. At the high school, for example, in stairwells, you know, just some area, you got to live with your camera system to find out where the areas are for improvement and we're doing that, so we're being really reactive to that, but we're also being proactive and that certainly goes for looking at El Rodeo because this is a very unique school in that we were able to look at our security program before we moved in and so like our other schools, we were adding on after we'd been there, after we lived in that space for a while. This was a space where we were able to get in before students and staff are in and really design it around the needs of the top security procedures that we have, working with the police department, working with some consultants on where that information should go and so this is unique in that before students even set foot and staff in our new school, that it has been designed around a safety procedure, a safety system that we have in place. Of course, that doesn't mean to say that it's not going to need some additions and some adjustments, it certainly will, but it's certainly nice to have that all set up in the most natural way, so instead of having to add cables and add things afterwards, like we were able to do that before and for the most part and that has added a lot to our entire system, so we're certainly very thankful to our police department and also our fire department, working with us in the area of safety. MNO, under the leadership and direction of Mr. Haas, there has been a lot of activity that's been, a lot of improvements that have been done throughout the school district and you can see here, we reported on in the past, just the reading green, the improvements at Horace Mann, also just, we've made some adjustments about where MNO lives, MNO really didn't have a home before and now they do and so we've moved some spaces around and I think that they have found themselves in a really good place permanently. We have, at the Conheim, we've restored the staircase there and then also just over the district, we've just overhauled our HVAC system and much like we did with COVID, ensuring that we have the cleanest and the highest level of filters and so that's been consistently kept up since that time, since COVID and we're very proud of that. And just the FIT report that we have, we do this every year, as you know, and something that Mr. Haas has reported on is that we are exceeding the levels of our FIT report, which is, which says a lot about the district and how we're keeping up with all of our facilities, which is especially important after all of the improvements that we've made over time, that with our new construction and our new facilities, that it's just as important to keep those up and well-maintained as it is some of our older sites and areas. So just quick overview of that reading green that we've talked about, also this is this relocation, this is, Mr. Haas has just done such a great job here, it's like, it's actually going to like Home Depot, I mean, it's that organized, it's that well-stocked and we're very proud of that. This is that staircase on the Conheim that was restored and then also just a picture just of our HVAC systems and it's not just keeping up with them, but it's also really thoroughly cleaning them as well and everything around that area and then also just our FIT Construction services, as you know, we've done a much better job than we have, I think, in the last several years as far as the type of communication that we have. We are approaching that completion for El Rodeo, we've done a lot of work, as you know, on El Rodeo, we're excited for that grand opening and so that is one area that we're going to be excited to be able to check that box and say, that's done and we're open. Right around the corner is B3, B4 at the high school for modernization and that should be finished in the spring of 2025. Our upper field area, so we have a design-build contractor already set up and they are working on that final design, construction is in progress, that should also be a 2025 finish. Building C, which is, we need to stop calling it Building C, we're going to call it the new Conheim because that's what it is and so that recommendation for that contract, that is in place with Swinerton and that is going to be up and rolling and we're really glad that the board has supported the next step in the new Conheim, is that's a much-needed area of the high school that is going to be, needed to be constructed. And then finally, just the Venico site, the old oil well site that, I know that the oil derricks aren't out there, but you know, we still call it that area back there, just the backfill and the compaction, just the underground drainage, all of that work's been done, that's been a tremendous amount of work that needed to be done in order to keep that area in ready for its next phase. Some of what's in the planning stage now, which is something that comes up in our meetings all the time, is the grand lawn, like we, it's, we talk about the grand lawn about every week and so, because we know how important it is to the community and so we're always looking to see where we are in progress, where we can, you know, finally get to a point where we can make some adjustments so that we begin to release certain areas of that lawn for students so that that can be reopened to them. The planning stage for the athletic fields, that is ongoing and then also the parking lot for the south side, right by Olympic. The communication and updates, as I've reported, is, whether it's through updated meetings that we have here at the Board of Education, that we've been providing more of these visuals and just the overall presentations to town halls that we've had and also just the information and pictures that are shared on social media. We have not done that a lot in the past and so, but over the last year or so, I think that we are sharing more about what's being completed and sharing some of the successes that people are following along and that's been a really important part of our progress is to share and thank the community for their support for a lot of the work that's being The CBOC, yet another public committee that we work with, again, this is a committee that is really tasked to look back at a lot of the work that's been done. It's kind of a thankless job, it's a kind of a thankless committee at times because you're always looking back to see the reporting, how, looking at spreadsheets, looking at budgets, looking at when things were completed, how they were completed, were they completed on time, there's a lot of information that this group looks at and overwhelmingly, throughout this year especially, people have been very pleased with the attendance of Will and Amin and Raphael being such a big part of these meetings and again, the consistent part here is the information that's being provided in a way that is understandable and so that has been a big change for the CBOC, so that's going very, very well and we want to continue, but that great strides have been made just in the overall culture and I'll say even trust of that team. Same with business services as far as performance, financial audits, you know, we're receiving very high marks for the work that we're doing, the reporting that we're doing and the feedback that we're getting back from people to, that are ensuring that this is all being done with the highest level of fidelity. And our facilities master planning is underway, that was just awarded, but they're already starting, this team is already starting to have conversations with our staff so that we can provide a very comprehensive facility masters plan to the board. I'm going to end with communications and strategic initiatives, a lot of this is work that you get to see, which is exciting. We have spent a lot of time, and rightfully so, on El Rodeo and with Hawthorne and just as excited as we are with opening up El Rodeo, that we know that Hawthorne is a place that is a very special place for generations of students and families and so we have spent a lot of time celebrating Hawthorne, whether it was for staff at a meeting a couple of weeks ago and having staff present and coming together over the generations so that they could meet and not only see each other, but in their own way, say goodbye. We also have an event coming up this week is for alumni to come together and it's hosted by the fifth grade, which is super cute and this is going to be a great way to not only say goodbye, but to really honor Hawthorne in all of their generation and the success and these are going over really well in the community and this is something that we knew early on, that it was more about the bricks and mortar of a school than it is about the magic that happens inside the school and these have just been really well-attended events where people feel very good about attending and reconnecting with one another because that's what it's all about and we are in the business of connecting with kids and with our staff and our community and that's what these events have done. Pathways to success, the promotion with BHGF, many of our board members were able to attend the event at El Rodeo, which was a huge success, it was a great way to introduce the new auditorium to many people, but then to also then kick off a new campaign for fundraising as it relates to the namings that we've all worked so hard on and that was a great opportunity to kind of kick that off for the auditorium seating naming at our schools and the high school will be next. This is also a really great time as well, is we have, coming up in front of us, a decade of centennial celebrations and so BVMS is next, so this year we'll be celebrating BVMS being 100 years old, we just had Hawthorne turn 100 and now next is BVMS and over the next 10 years, so we'll have then the El Rodeo and also Horace Mann and then also the high school. So we've done a lot of celebrating in the past, we really want to thank the community because when we reached out, like we don't have all the archives, we don't have all of the photos and people have been really great about sharing a lot of the significant historical moments with us and their families and so we're really happy to be able to see that. This is, these are just some pictures from that staff and alumni event a couple of Sundays ago that was well-attended. This was the event that we had just this last week, last, was it Wednesday, Thursday? That was very well-attended, again, BHGF honored Lily Bossi at this event, but again, was a great way to recognize what's happening in our school district, people that are supporting our schools and then to also showcase and show off not only our students, but also our new building. And that is my end of report. Thank you, I know that was a little long.
Thank you. Ms. Lipson?
Thank you so much, Dr. Briggie, just for highlighting all of the amazing accomplishments you and your cabinet and us as a district community have achieved this past year, thank you.
Mr. Margot?
Thank you for that very comprehensive
I was going to do that.
Report.
Hence the title, State
To quote the valuable Mrs. Marcus, so. Very, very comprehensive.
Now I don't know what to say. I'm speechless.
Ms. Manishari?
Thank you for your time in preparing that and thank you for everybody's time to have accomplished all of those items to, you know, for us to be able to present such a thing in general and I'm exhausted just by watching it and having lived the last couple of years with you, I am just so amazed at how much hard work and dedication goes into operating this school district by so many people on you and your team and I thank everybody who works really hard to make all of that happen, notwithstanding when I express, you know, a disagreement or any dissatisfaction, it's because I love BHUSD that I want it to be the best that it possibly can be and everything you described is how amazing it is, so I thank you and I thank my colleagues and I thank our staff for everything that they do and the devotion to our community that they have and I really truly believe that this is just the beginning for us and I think that the community sees that too, so thank you for your time
Thank you.
to prepare it.
Well, I crossed off the word comprehensive just now. Well, there's the State of the Union, there's the State of the State, there's the State of the City and now we have the State of the District. I think that's the first time we've ever had such a comprehensive report on what's going on in the district and you are to be congratulated for such a tremendous presentation. I think part of what it's all due to is you have been able to make a strong team that is so helpful in making all of this happen, it doesn't happen alone, we have a leader, but he has to be able to pick the people to do it with and you've been able to do that, Dr. Briggie, so for that you are to be really congratulated, but I know you're not going to stop here, it's going to get even better because you have ideas for new things that will improve our district and make us even more back to the lighthouse or the ivory tower that we once were, so I'm with you and I'll support you and thank you for that report.
Thank you.
I agree with all of my colleagues and I also like how you said that the communicative process with the construction now is so much better, it's very understandable, it's, it seems, it's very linear and I think that there's generally a feeling of trust and understanding and transparency with what's going on. I like the colorful diagrams that give us I like the colorful diagrams that give us updates too, and I really do have an understanding. So thank you for that.
Okay.
With that, can I get, or I'd like to make a motion for the approval of contract with Garza Construction for flagpole and concrete monument construction at El Rodeo Elementary School.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion?
I just want to say, I saw the rendering of it, and I was really impressed. I wanted to know one thing. Is the flagpole attached to the, or is it behind it? I didn't know. I was kind of confused if the flagpole was part of that. Mr. Carrot?
Good evening. Is this on? There we go. It is, it's not part of it, it's right behind the monument. Yes.
Well, that, but they can get at the flagpole then to raise the lower
Absolutely.
Okay, just checking.
No more flagpole discussions. Just kidding. Okay. All in favor? No, no, we
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, I'll make a move, a motion for the approval of the Fonder Solari Incorporated's Amendment Number Three to the Existing Bond Program Management Contract.
All second? Discussion?
Yeah, I have a discussion. Sorry, so I just wanted to make sure that, sorry, excuse me, we are still on track with our budget for completion? Or are we pulling this from contingency?
So these are for projects that are kind of, where we're looking at outside funds outside of the bond?
Right.
So for instance, in this case, some of these projects are for developer fees?
I understand that.
And that's what we're using?
Is the developer fee paying the increase?
Yes.
Okay.
We're going to be using the
All right, so this increase doesn't
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. It does say that. I missed that one. Apologies. Okay, thank you.
Sure. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay.
Well, there's no more, this is a discussion of the BHH color selections. I don't
Oh, wait, I don't think we did the approval of the Fonder Solari
All this is, is just, we're looking at
It's a discussion, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Hi, Ken.
Good evening.
How are you?
Good, thank you.
Okay.
So we have some exciting opportunities here, so we're hoping to get this PowerPoint going. But yes, it's really needed, and I think it's, you're all going to like it. So Ken adds it.
Really? So this is regarding the
Yeah.
Are you guys ready, or are you doing something?
Josh is just loading it up.
Okay.
Can we ask questions while?
Sure.
Okay. All right, so in the presentation that we got and what was attached to the agenda, I noticed that there was no color differentiation or selections for the L building. So there were photos of the L building, but it didn't reference any color changes or have any
That's right. So the recommendation, so first of all, good evening, everybody, and thank you for the time for this. I'm going to start with, with regard to the L building, I worked pretty extensively with our site administration, Will on the construction side of things, one of our architects who was kind enough to give his time, and also the Dunn Edwards Color Design Specialist, to come up with a recommendation for both the A and the L buildings. The consensus was is that the L building, or STC, as it's fondly called, would benefit from staying basically the same colors it is. We have some dark or medium gray architectural details, such as the metal siding and the window elements. And we feel that because there are so many events held in the STC or L building courtyard, that the lightness of those walls would, you know, help with reflectivity for our afternoon and evening events, and it also contrasts very well with the landscaping, which will receive some improvements this coming year. So with regard to the L building, the recommendation is to refinish it in the same fashion as it is right now.
Is there any thought to taking the north wall of the A building? Can you go?
Yes. So if we go right there, there's a couple of different options, and that's where I'd love to get some feedback and input.
Okay.
So if we wrap, so that's the proposed color. I'm just going to go back to the first slide for a moment. Excuse me, sorry about that.
So Ken, just to confirm, you only, we see color scheme three, so is it correct you only gave us what you're proposing, but not a variety of schemes?
Yes, yes, that is. There are so many different possible schemes, but working with the design team, architecture, consulting with the site admin, we really felt it was important to blend the A building in with the B buildings
There's key differences, right?
And to maintain the STC or L building
That's what I think. So here, no, not here, the other one. Go to the other one. Yes, thank you. There's two schools of thought. Because this court, you mentioned the courtyard and trying to have a uniform look, would it behoove us to paint that north wall of Building A the same color that we hit with the rest of the courtyard, with the rest of Building L, as the first picture kind of shows?
That looks like, wouldn't that be the south wall? Isn't that the south wall?
That would be the north wall.
North wall.
Which, wait, what are you saying is the north wall?
The darker one in the right picture.
Building A is the north wall.
Well, but that's the south side of the building though, isn't it?
No, it's technically on the north, because it's hitting, it's going to hit Santa Monica.
This is Building L.
Right.
This is Building A.
Right.
I'm talking about the north wall of Building A, which is this.
But Noah, why just the north wall? I agree with you that the lighter one is better.
Because the sightline of the rest of the school is Building B. And it would then contradict that.
Especially if you come out of the building
So this would be more, you pretend it's kind of like, almost like a movie set, where it's contained within itself, and then the rest of the building goes off to match across the Heath Avenue. And I'm okay with that. I hated that there's three different building colors, so to knock it down to two is fine for me.
To me, the fallen rock looks, I don't know if it's just the way that it looks in the picture, but it's really dark there.
So it's very difficult to get the actual rendering. So when we actually paint, so the point was is to express the notion of having the A building match the B building. So the rendering itself, that's the closest standard color we did for the purpose of the rendering, but we will do an exact, virtually exact match.
Do the Dunn Edwards people will color match the finish on Building B?
That's correct.
And create the color pretty much custom?
That's correct. So if you look at the base of the B building, I think it's B2, you can see some areas on the lower section that were painted
Yeah.
That blend in virtually perfectly with the actual building itself. That's going to be the
Yeah. I'm not an artist, but I would say that the lighter version actually looks more like the Building B color to me than the one presented in the schematic of the darker color.
So the darker color is really a factor of the way it presents coming through the computer. You know, even when we printed it
Yeah.
You know, it's not exactly accurate, but at the end of the day, the A building will match the B buildings if we get that guidance.
Are you saying that that north wall is going to be the darker color, and that the rest, the L building is going to be the lighter color? Is that the way you're proposing?
There's a couple of options. My recommendation is that we would go and wrap the darker color around. We'd still be able to have the lightness of the courtyard.
But you're talking about trying to have lightness in the, light in the courtyard by making it dark? Are you not taking away that?
It can go one way or another, so, you know, I'm open to the suggestions. I think wrapping the building line of sight wise, and I've taken a couple of pictures from Moreno and Durant, that would kind of illustrate that. I think wrapping the building makes sense.
So you're saying, doing it in the darker
I think both would look good. Yes, that's my recommendation.
And then using that, the color on the L building is also on the facing building that we are in right now.
That's correct. So if you look at this
And then on the backside, you're offering another color scheme in the backside. Is that, am I correct on the back?
No, the backside of the STC or the L building would be the same color as it is now, that lightish gray off-white color.
Well, I'm looking at this picture right here. That's a darker color.
So that is the actual, the actual color of the building currently. So let me get to that right now. Those were the pictures that I took.
All right, that's the picture I'm talking about.
So that's an actual picture of the L building.
That's the way it looks right now.
That's the way it looks right now. And that's why I feel, you know, that we need to kind of maintain the lightness of, as much as you can, on the L building, because that
So you're proposing changing to the same color that's on the courtyard side?
So the only thing that would potentially change on the STC if we're approved to do that would be potentially the north wall. Everything else on this L building would remain the same.
The same.
We'd take this off-white, the lighter color.
So this dark color won't be there anymore?
No, the color you're looking at there, that's actual metal siding. That's not, that's not a paintable surface. That's really a lifetime
That stays.
Yeah, that would all stay.
That stays, okay.
The accent.
That accent, and that really anchors the building. So if you stand on Moreno and Durant and look, let's say, at the B buildings, and then the potential future gray color, darker gray of the A building refresh, that kind of ties it all together. They're very similar in color.
The other school of thought on this, Ken, is that the A building matches the L building instead of matching the B building. And I'm just throwing that out as a thought, only because architectural style-wise, it's way more rectangular prism-looking than early California, you know? And that it might, it might be a way to go, just to just, that whole building with the L and A is the same color scheme. You can add the accents with that, with that, whatever that color is, the darker one there, and then paint it that same color, because it's just, it's, Building A is complete function, no form, right? That's the kind of building it is. So it was designed to just be, to house education without any particular thought to architectural style.
That was part of our conversation, and the reason we recommended going with the matching of the B building was to kind of make that go away a little bit, to make it blend in so it didn't catch your eye. If we painted the lighter color and copied the STC color or the L building color, it's really going to accentuate what you just spoke about.
But Noah, what about if we painted it the lighter color to match the STC, but then the accents on the A building would be the brick color to loop into the brick?
You mean to the performing arts annex?
Yes.
That brick?
I mean, because it seems like that's why you chose the brick color, right, for the accent, to match the B building?
I thought he was doing the roof.
Trying to catch that roof tile color.
He's doing the roof tiles.
Yeah. That's what I mean, the roof tiles, exactly.
Yeah, but then, but that's a kind of misplaced, because we don't have anything. That's creating a whole new color scheme.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I understand both ways. I almost, you know, it's hard to tell from the renderings, obviously, but, and it's not going to affect the cost of the project, the selection of the paint color, but, I mean, my, I just think, I think Building B is so beautiful and needs to stand, it's okay standing on its own, and you don't have to try to blend Building, it's my aesthetic opinion, by the way, I'm not a professional. You don't have to blend Building A into Building B. You can just have that whole back section, which is not visible from the street, by the way, you know? You're not, it's only visible to everybody inside campus.
But the problem is the, on the right-hand side, it's presenting very mauve and dark.
It is presenting darker.
So it's hard to verify. For us, it feels like a risk, you know what I mean? To say yes or no, because it's a, it's a big expenditure. It's not something that we could easily undo.
Do you want, do you want us to bring like the other color that Noah mentioned? And just
I think options would be easier
Yeah.
Okay. We could do that.
Agreed.
So we'll bring you a couple of options.
Please.
And the job is actually supposed to start right after school.
Yeah.
And so literally Saturday, June 1st, we're going to start the process.
They won't need the final color by then. We could do it on the second. They're going to be prepping and patching
Yeah, they'll be a good solid week or so, so
Are we on the fourth?
We can hit it on the fourth. The gentleman says for the fourth. Does that work, Dr. Stern? Can we bring this back on the fourth to do a final color decision? Because they're going to start the work, but they don't need the final color the day they start.
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay. Is that okay?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay.
We understand your urgency. We don't want to hold you up.
We'll be fine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll get those started. Thank you.
Okay, so moving to our
So I'll make a motion to approve the LA County Registered Recorder County Clerk's new option allowing candidates running for county-level offices to pay for a candidate's statement to be published on a dedicated page on the lavote.gov website.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And we come to communication from the board members. Okay. Mr. Margot?
En voyage. Classic icon you are. Just a quick thing from last week's Human Relations Commission meeting. I gave the report about what's going on in the district. They do want to hear a little bit more about possibly some bullying and behavior statistics, because that's more the purview of that commission. So I'm going to kind of shift from what's going on in the district and events to some more stats. They seem to like stats. They get it from the police department every month. I do want to thank, I don't know if you have this, Dr. Stern, on your list, but I wanted to thank Colby and all of the graduating seniors in KBEV for their wonderful work for our meetings. I know Colby's graduating, I don't know who else is seniors over there. So thank you, Colby, and all the other seniors for your work. Well, our past board, student board member Alex Baden is still here.
Yes.
Weathering the evening. Welcome back, Alex. She said earlier, I said, what are you doing here? She said, I'm done with school. And I said, what are you doing here?
Yeah.
And, oh, from the Human Relations Commission, they will be announcing, I believe, in the next meeting in June, they're going to be doing another BH Reads. I know Dr. Seaman is involved with this. So I'm not going to say anything, because I'm not going to take their thunder, but there will be a citywide book coming June, and I think the event is going to be in September. Is that correct? Okay, but I'm not going to spoil anything. I'm not saying the book, but this is a citywide read that's done in conjunction with the city and the school district, so
BHUSD, congratulations.
Everybody.
And Public Library, all partnering together.
It's a wonderful, wonderful thing. It brings the whole city together. The last, last year, they did Lessons in Chemistry, and the students read it too, and discuss it when they get back to school in the fall. So I'm excited for them to announce that. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. I attended a variety of events, and I would like to congratulate our BHGF team and everybody on the district side that did such an enormous lift at the fabulous event at El Rodeo for that kickoff. It was amazing, and so many hands were involved in that exceptional experience. So thank you, everybody. I would like to congratulate Lilly Bossi on her Lifetime Achievement Award, and that was definitely, you know, as soon as I heard that's what's happening, I made perfect sense, and it was an honor to be there with her and everyone else from the city. And I actually thought that it was a great precursor for when B3 and B4 come online in one year, and we'll be able, you know, it was like a mini version of that experience. So it made me even more enthused about the upcoming construction successes. The next event that I went to was the Hawthorne Movie Night. It actually was a really interesting experience for me, because as I was walking from my car into Hawthorne, I saw a grandma who was pushing her, her disabled grandson in a wheelchair, and I stopped to talk to them and to invite them into Hawthorne to join us to watch Willy Wonka and the Chocolate Factory. And the young man happened to be 19 years old, and the grandmother said to me that every single Hawthorne parent that passed by gave her the same invitation. I was like number 85. And it really warmed my heart. She was just, she was moved, you know, she said, I cannot believe it. Not one parent passed by without stopping to acknowledge me, and it truly made me proud. And then I wanted to also share that one of our parents, Della Ronan, who's in the elementary school phase, is trying to promote a Wait Till Eighth program. And I think that, given the conversations that we've been having, and we are all very concerned about the kids getting the phones earlier, now that we know better, I really encourage the younger parents to look into it and to consider doing it. It can only succeed if we all do it as a community. And so please, I ask everyone to spread the word and to consider waiting till eighth, till you give your children a smartphone. And I'm going to aspire to do the same with my little one. That's it. Thank you.
Yeah, the CBOC met last week, and they are presenting to us their findings in a report. I believe they'll be ready with it. I think they're bringing it to us on June 4th, so they're very pleased with what's going on, and you'll hear from them at the next meeting, which I believe is June 4th. I attended the last Beverly Vista PTA meeting today. They were saying goodbye to all of the eighth-grade graduating parents in a very emotional time, also saying goodbye to Dr. Skon and several other teachers that will not be returning next fall. I was at the Health and Safety Meeting yesterday. We again had, we show our colors because Colleen, Mrs. Colleen Lynch, brought another student, the president of the MSA, Talia Goschani, and she reported on her final project, which is called Getting Ready for Tomorrow, which is about teaching classes in CPR and being ready for emergencies. She is an amazing young lady, and she's graduating. She was the president of the MSA program. The fire department gave a brief report. Their metrics for the month was about the same as it was the previous year. Unfortunately, the police department's report was not as positive. They said that their response time was up, and there's a tremendous number of arrests in the city. Chris Parker made a report on the Human Services Division and how the ambassador program is working and enforcement of the homeless and finding places of shelter for them. It is Stroke Awareness Month, and they had a presentation by Dr. May Kim Tenser, and she presented the four words that are so important about having a stroke. The words for FAST, F-A-S-T. F is for the facial features that might change. A is for the arms or the way you might have something happen in your arms. S is for something happening to your speech, and T is for the time that you must immediately take action as quickly as possible. So always to remember the words FAST. Since there are no more meetings before the end of the school, I would like to wish everybody that's graduating, everybody that's leaving, to have a wonderful wherever you're going, and I'd like to hope that everybody has a very safe summer and everybody returns in good health in the fall. And to my dear friend, at the end of the thing, I want to thank her again and wish her well, and I think I've covered everything. Oh, I know, one more thing. I will be at Hawthorne, the Alumni Farewell on
Friday.
Friday. And then right after that, I will be attending the annual PTA luncheon that they say goodbye, and all the new members are brought in, and the new officers, and so on. So until the weekend, I guess it's going to be very busy.
Okay. And I also very much enjoyed the El Rodeo opening. I just keep seeing red. It was a very red night, but it was great. And also, Sophia, again, farewell, but I'm sure we will see you, and this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We should do a picture with Sophia.
Okay. Okay. All right.